Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Meeting of Monday, December 5th, 2022, here in the McKinnon Council Chambers at approximately 7:10 PM. Relative to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, and for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio, excuse me, both video and audio methods. First order of business is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number two, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ruiz.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Absent.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Item number three, consider and accept the Town Council Meeting minutes of Monday, November 21st, 2022.
Say.
I'm sorry, yes, November 21st, 2022. We have a motion by Counselor Steves and a second by Counselor Adams. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Counselor Steves.
Yeah, I'd like to make a clarification under item number, item number 18. The paragraph where I talk about empire historical restoration doesn't exist in Secretary of State's database. At the time, it didn't, and when I was looking for it, it didn't, but I just wanted to clarify that after that, when Mr. Monaco passed out the paperwork that had his mother's signature on it, I looked for it again, and I did find it, so it actually was there. I just wasn't looking for the right name.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number four, Subcommittee Reports, Foray, General Government, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on November 30th. We don't currently have another one scheduled. Items number 10, 11, 13, 14, 28, 37, 38, and 39 were on our agenda. It looked like from the agenda, the number 27 would have gone to GenGov 2, but it never did, so it'd be interesting to see what that actually is. And as I said, I have no meetings scheduled.
Very good. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The DPW Subcommittee Meeting was held on November 30th. In attendance were committee members Counselor Steves, Counselor Dow, and myself, citizen members Kevin Splain and Steve Lazo. Also in attendance were Town Manager McCall, DPW Operation Managers Phil Harding, and numerous residents were also in attendance. The following items were discussed and are voted on on tonight's agenda, items 20 through 26 and 29. We reviewed, discussed accepting the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program grant. We discussed the petition to repair Lincoln Street a private way. We discussed expanding the no parking zone in the area of 11 Charlton Street. We reviewed, discussed adding three-foot tubular surface mounts and line striping to improve sight lines in various no parking zones in town. We reviewed, discussed adding a stop sign at Fisk Street and Cliff Street. We discussed a citizen's request for the addition of a blind person sign in the area of 114 Litchfield Avenue. A citizen's request to add a stop sign on Ellis Road at the intersection of Tory Road. And we discussed a citizen's request for the addition of a blind drive sign in the area of 183 Brentwood Drive. We also received an update on the sign replacement on Larishell Way, an update on the rental generator at the South Street Pumping Station. We discussed hiring, the hiring of private contractors for snow plowing in town, and an update on missing and broken sidewalks on East Main Street in front of 5K Street. And finally, on social media last week, there was some discussion about the winter parking ban, and I realized that this was overlooked by our DPW Subcommittee, so I did email the Town Manager, and he corresponded with Chief Woodson, and they decided that we would post the street listings, and his department would only issue courtesy violations until this goes before the DPW Subcommittee. I appreciate the manager's response and the action by the Police Chief Woodson in giving the residents a break on this. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Education and Human Services, Counselor Ryan isn't here, will move past. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So we had a meeting on November 29th, 2022, with gen. Items number 12. We'll be discussing that. That is an EHS that I covered for P and D, and gen. Items number 30 through 36 will be discussed. Thank you.
Very good. Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lazo.
No report at this time. Meeting scheduled for December 12th at 6:00. Thank you.
Very good. Chairman's announcements, I have none this evening. Town Manager's announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you through you to the members of the council, the audience here, and those walking at home. Just a couple of quick updates. I did meet with and talk with Mr. Harding. We're going to continue to work on the carpets. They came in the other day to look. They're going to try and move out some of the equipment on the upcoming weekend so they can carpet those offices that were slated to be carpeted. We did have someone come last week for a preliminary view of the slate roof. They're coming back tomorrow to do a more detailed estimate. They're going to get up, they got a 40-foot ladder. I'm not going up there, nor is any of my staff, but they will be going up. It looks like the ice break that's on the back end of the building when they install it may have caused the leaks on the slate roof, so we're going to get an estimate on that. I did talk with our interim DPW Director, as well as the Chief, on a couple of issues, including the parking ban, and a couple of the paving issues that came up over the weekend. I'm going to meet with him tomorrow again to go over. There was some questions about some of the paving that had happened on some of the patches and the cold weather. Mr. Jackson did go out with some type of thermal detection device to check the surface, and didn't let those individuals pave until the temperature got up to close to 40 degrees in some of those patches. He said that he's allowing some work to be done at the end of West Street to close that up for the winter. I did have a citizen talk to me about a couple of the issues with regard to the bylaw. I'll follow up with him because I'm having a meeting with Mr. Jackson tomorrow to tighten up some of the ongoing issues with some of the contractors. And lastly, I've been working with the Chief, as well as Mr. Jackson. We're going to be putting out the bid documents shortly for the dog kennel. Those plans were finalized by McClure, and as part of the service, they are going to publicize those and start the bid process for us, so I'll keep you updated on that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. Item number seven, Presentation. We have a presentation this evening by the Board of Assessors' Overview on Tax Classification and the Tax Rate by Rachel Carney, Principal Assessor.
All right. Let me just get to the beginning. Okay, I think everybody here was here for my first presentation, so I'll go as quick as I can. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, Town Manager McCall, and the citizens of Southbridge. Tonight, the council will be voting on four tax options for fiscal year 2023. That will determine how the burden is shared. On behalf of the Board of Assessors, Fran Busquet, Diane Kokoska, and myself, we would like to present the following information that explains those options and how they may impact property owners in Southbridge. Now that our new growth and the valuation of real estate and personal property have been approved by the Department of Avenue, we are required to hold this tax classification hearing. The reason we hold this hearing is to allow for an open forum to discuss our local tax policies. While we are not setting a tax rate tonight, we will be providing a projected tax rate, and this tax rate still requires approval by the Department of Avenue and is subject to change. And also due to rounding, the numbers provided throughout this presentation are not precise. The council has four options to consider and vote on, whether to have a single or split tax rate, a residential exemption, a small commercial exemption, or an open space exemption. Southbridge currently has no open space land because the majority of that land is exempted already from taxation or already benefits from Chapter 61 tax relief, so that will require a no vote tonight. The next few slides will give you a quick overview of the assessors' methods in valuing property in Southbridge. First, we start by determining if the property is real or personal, and real property is further broken down into four categories: residential, commercial, industrial, and open space. And personal property is anything movable, not permanently attached to the land. The next, the assessors appraise the value of each class, utilizing the best method for each class to ensure a fair and equitable distribution of the tax burden. As you can see by this chart, 81% of Southbridge's value comes from the residential class, with the total of 19% of that value coming from the CIP class. CIP is short for, the short term we use for commercial, industrial, and personal property classes, and you'll hear me use it often throughout the presentation. Every year, the assessors determine the fair cash value as a result of a comprehensive study of the real estate sales and the rental market for income properties. We also conduct hundreds of property inspections each year to ensure our data is accurate. The total taxable value for FY '23 is $1,553,367,369, and that's an increase of 15.8% over FY '22. And this slide breaks down by the classes, the change, and the residential increased by 19.6 overall, commercial increased by 1.9 overall, industrial increased by 6.9 overall, and personal property decreased by 0.6%. And that reduction is due to a few business closures, but mainly the natural depreciation of personal property. The total value for each class is found by combining the magenta and the red in the This year-to-year comparison shows a single-family property that was assessed at 2051 in FY '22 and is now being assessed at 2454 for FY '23. It is important to note that within each class, different types of properties, neighborhoods, and styles of homes may have changed at different rates than the class total. The assessors determine the new growth for the community. The new growth is an increase in assessed value over the prior year due to new construction, physical improvements, lot splits, or anything new to the tax rule, like the personal property assets of a new business, or the new assets acquired by an existing business. Without inspections, most of the new growth would be missed or inaccurately valued. An interesting thing to note here is that even though personal property reduced in value, it was a significant contributor to our overall new growth. In fact, the majority of Southbridge's new growth comes directly from the CIP classes. Next, we determine the tax levy. This is when the hard work of all the town departments and our counselors comes together. It's a simple calculation to determine the tax levy, as you can see, but the process to get here is much more involved. First, we need the total budget for the year, which is determined after months and months of meetings to find the best use of our taxpayers' dollars. And that budget is reduced by the receipts that are brought in by each of the various departments by selling permits and collecting fees. Bringing us to a final tax levy of $24,871,871. Under Proposition 2.5, the town of Southbridge for fiscal year 2023 would be allowed to raise a maximum levy of $26,812,800. And the calculation of the maximum allowable tax levy and the levy limit is shown on the slide. In addition, Proposition 2.5 also mandates that the tax levy cannot exceed the town's levy ceiling. The levy ceiling is 2.5% of the town's taxable assessed value. So for Southbridge, the levy ceiling is calculated by taking the total taxable value, multiplying it by 2.5, and you achieve the levy ceiling of $38,834,184. The FY 2023 tax levy is below the levy ceiling and the maximum allowable tax levy, therefore meets the constraints of Proposition 2.5, and we can proceed to the calculation of the actual tax rate. In FY 2023, we are left with an excess capacity of $1,238,41, and that's the additional amount that could have been appropriated but was not. Now, the council must decide how the levy burden is shared. With a single tax rate, everyone is taxed at the same rate. The single tax rate keeps Southbridge competitive for new business relocation, and it maintains the CIP values and stability for existing business. With a split tax rate, more of the tax burden is shifted to the CIP classes, relieving the residential burden. A split tax rate could cause businesses to seek other areas to conduct operations, and it could hinder the prospects of attracting new businesses to Southbridge. This chart illustrates how the levy is shared between the classes. As you see, 81% of the burden is carried by the residential class, while 19% is carried by the CIP class. Of the 19% CIP class burden falls primarily on the commercial class at 42%. The commercial class mainly consists of retail, office spaces, other examples of commercial properties in Southbridge or United Lens, the Hotel and Conference Center, grocery stores, nursing homes, and banks. By adopting a single tax rate or a minimum residential factor of 1, the projected tax rate on all properties for FY 2023 is $15.97 per $1,000 of value. This example shows the impacts to the annual tax bill on a modestly valued home at $245,400. As you can see in this year-to-year comparison, with a single tax rate, the annual tax bill would increase by $247.75. If the council were to adopt the maximum residential factor of 0.88, in the scenario, the annual tax bill would decrease by about $227.97. While reducing the residential tax rate by voting a split rate sounds good in theory, the reality is Southbridge doesn't have enough CIP properties to support the tax increase they would incur. A financially healthy community is one that maintains diversity of property classes and strives for a near equal balance of those classes. Therefore, to intentionally shift the tax burden to the business classes would be short-sighted and counterproductive to the vision for the future of Southbridge. As you can see, the impacts on the CIP classes, if a minimum, maximum residential factor of 0.88 were to be approved, is significantly higher than the benefit to the homeowner would be. A modestly valued home at $265,000 would save approximately $500 annually, but the impact to the CIP classes would be in the several thousands. A negative impact to the CIP classes could lead to a reduction in our annual new growth. For 14 consecutive years, the majority of our new growth comes directly from the CIP classes. Commercial properties are valued based on income, and increase to taxes directly impacts the bottom line of the commercial properties, therefore possibly reducing the value of those properties. The split rate is used successfully in large communities with a high ratio of CIP properties and other draw factors such as major highways and ports like Boston and Worcester and Auburn, we confirmed. If the council maintains a minimum residential factor of 1 with a single tax rate of $1597, the average residential single-family tax bill would be $4,232.05. The average commercial bill, $9,582, and the average industrial bill, $11,179. So again, Worcester and Auburn are the only communities I'm aware of near us with a split rate. Webster and Starbridge tried it and have gone back to a single rate, and the Board of Assessors recommends voting for a residential factor of 1 on that. And adopting a small commercial exemption shifts the burden within the commercial and industrial classes. The amount of the levy remains the same, and personal property is not impacted. To qualify for a small commercial exemption, an owner of a commercial property that is valued at less than $1 million and occupied by a small business with fewer than 10 employees may be granted an exemption of no more than 10% of the assessed value of the property. This discount is granted to the owner of the property, not the owner of the small business, unless they're one and the same. Adoption of this option will result in a higher tax rate for all other commercial and industrial properties. The current linkage of the law leaves the approval process unfair to deserving similar properties. One may be disqualified simply for being located within a building that is valued too high, or that does not require, or, excuse me, does not have or has too many people on staff. Most importantly, the law does not require that the exemption be passed on to the business who qualified for it. This exemption is granted to the property owner only. Adoption of this exemption shifts the burden within the commercial and industrial class, resulting in a higher tax rate for non-qualifying properties, and the Board of Assessors do not recommend adopting the small commercial exemption. Finally, the residential exemption, which shifts the tax burden within the residential class from owners of modestly valued residential properties to the owners of vacation homes, higher-valued homes, and residential properties not owner-occupied, including apartments and vacant land. Communities that choose to adopt the exemption often have the following characteristics: they're large cities or towns with a majority of non-owner-occupied properties, like apartment buildings or vacation homes; resort communities with many seasonal residents, like Martha's Vineyard. Again, the Board of Assessors do not recommend, I keep forgetting that one, adoption of the residential exemption. And I have three slides that give you a breakdown of the potential impact, and this calculation is based off of last year's information, so it's for ratio splits and example purposes only. The first slide shows a 10% exemption, and you'll see that it shifts the tax rate to non-qualifying properties to 1942 from the 1790 of last year. Properties that fall between $30,000 and $220,000 in value would see a savings in their tax bill, and then properties valued over $300,000 would all see a significant increase to their bill, and as they go up in value, it's more of a hit. Slide 2 shows an example with a 20% discount, because we do have the option of different discount percentages. That would shift it from 1790 to 2065 for non-qualifying properties. And the final one is 35%, which is the maximum allowed, and that would shift from 1790 to 2283 for non-qualifying properties, residential properties. All right, and that is it. So I thank you for your time.
Very good. Any discussion from the counselors? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So as I was saying at the hearing, some of the values are what I look at, and to me, it doesn't make sense. As I was saying early, somebody could be charging 1,900. I've heard rents are skyrocketing anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000 a month for apartments, and yet, according to your chart here, a 2-3 family is worth less than my little three-bedroom house on Maria Avenue. So that's one thing that I have a question about why the value, why the assessed values are so skewed like that. Now, when I look at your chart up there, and you talk about, well, you talk about how a commercial property, I think the chart I was looking at, they'd be paying a lot more than a single family, but isn't that, isn't that just playing with the numbers? I mean, if my house is worth, let's say, just for example, the average value of a house is 300,000, and let's say there's 500 residents with a $300,000 house, well, their tax bill is going to be, what, $600? But if there's commercial property that's worth 600,000, and there's only 100 of them, then their average tax bill is going to be $6,000. So it's just a matter of playing with the numbers, am I right? No, you look.
I'm not sure exactly what the question is, but...
The question is, the numbers that you have here are just skewed by the total. I mean, the average tax bill, if there are more single families, then there's that many more that you're going to divide to get the average. If there's fewer commercial properties, then their tax bill average is going to be higher because there's fewer of them. Am I right?
Yes, I guess, but I'm still not 100% clear on the exact question, but I think I know where you're trying to get. The numbers that I had given you on those average values are just averages.
Right, they're just averages.
And so, again, you're right, there's just in the single-family class, we have, let's say, like 2,700 parcels.
So the average...
Of just the single-family homes.
When you add that many up and you divide it by how, 2,700, of course, you're going to have a lower number, correct?
Exactly. So, I mean, it's hard to look at those numbers. I mean, there's like so many different angles I can analyze.
Right, I know.
The data, literally. So, I mean, really, you would have to like come down into my office, and I could show you.
All right, no, that's fine.
Because, to be honest with you, three families, triple deckers. I wish I had the sales reports with me. I was shocked how much they were getting for those.
Right.
Shocked. Some of them are in pretty poor condition, that those just were selling like hotcakes this past year.
So then, why would that not factor in to the value?
Because our values aren't based off this year's sales. They're based off last year's...
So it's just based on sales, period?
This is based off of 2021's sales.
But it's not based on how much they're getting for rent?
If we have the data, we analyze it by that, and we use the best, the best method. And again, the return rate is very poor for those reports that we're asking for the data.
That's the only way you can get it, by them volunteering the information? You can't get the information any...
It's actually mandated by state law, so this year, we are issuing fines to people who do not file, there are any reports, because we're trying to improve the rate of return. So first year, we're issuing fines for not filing a return with us, and that is mandated by the state that we can fine people, so we are implementing those this year, trying to, because we want all the data. We need all the data so we can have accurate information, because that's our goal, is accuracy. We want to use the best, fairest method to value properties, no matter what kind of property is.
Okay, now, 5K Street, according to the documents that you provided, that was not moved from industrial to residential. Why?
Correct, it will be next year.
It will be next year.
So it was just the level of construction at the time, January 1st date where we did our inspection, it wasn't at that level to convert yet, but it is now, so it will be getting...
And that will have, that will have an impact on four-unit apartments?
That's going to have an impact on, excuse me, the industrial class greatly. That was a part of that 6.9% value increase was that K Street property, which is truly residential, but it had to be reported as industrial growth.
But next year...
Next year, it'll be residential.
And it'll be, have an impact on four-unit apartments?
Four units?
Well, that's more than a four unit, right?
Oh, well, we try to compare apples to apples, so, yeah, so it's going to be more similar to like the Marcy Street or the Wells School.
Right.
Yeah, in terms of comparisons, because it's also affordable housing, so it's a lot more similar type of property. So we would utilize that kind of stuff. Those, we rely heavily on income statements. Those owners never give us a problem getting us income statements. They want an accurate value.
So that brings me to the Wells Building. How come that was, that was not factored in this year?
We had some growth, but a lot of that growth got caught last year.
Okay.
Yep.
129 Worcester Street, the Knight Chevrolet, when that was assessed last year...
I'm not familiar with the property, I'm sorry.
Last year, that was assessed at 400,000 for the purpose of acquiring it for the new fire station. A professional assessor was hired, he went in there and said it's now worth 1.5 million. Is that going to be, have an effect?
I'm not even aware of that, of that report, so we don't look at appraisers' reports. We do mass appraisals, so it's a different methodology than it would be for valuing for a loan or financing or for purchase, so...
Well, why would you not look at that? I mean, if it's assessed by our, the town, at 400,000...
Because the appraisal is built for a different purpose.
Sorry.
So we can't use, so like, say, if somebody comes in, I mean, we can look at those comparables, but we use our own methodologies, because we do mass appraisal, we don't do... but we use our own methodologies, because we do mass appraisal, we don't do appraisal on individual properties. So it's a slightly different methodology. If you were to take, use PAP, which is appraisal one-on-one, I guess, you would learn that they're all done for specific purposes. It's kind of like, you know, your car, a car has several different values. You have your book value, your trade-in value, it's kind of on that same, I don't know what the word is, but they're just different types of appraisal. So we may grab some information from an appraisal if someone were to provide it for us, but we're not going to go by those numbers because it's for different purpose.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we would do our own valuation.
So your office does not recommend a split tax rate?
No, we do not.
We've had a single fat tax rate here in this town for at least 20 years. I haven't seen a lot of businesses coming to this town. I've seen a lot of businesses leave this town, so how would that be?
I can't guarantee it's going to bring people in, but I can guarantee you it's going to help to draw them away. And that's really, I mean, I know PEG and Economic Development and her team is really working hard to try and get people here, to try and help improve properties, to work on Main Street. I mean, this would just be like really a slap in the face to the work that they have done, because we're, you want a balance, you need to have.
I'm sorry.
You need to have a balance of commercial, residential, and industrial to really make a healthy community. Without them, everything falls on the residential class. I mean, I live in a community, we're almost 100% residential class. It's tough.
And I have talked to a few business owners, and they tell me that, that would not help their businesses at all, mainly because we don't have a good, a good way, access to the marketplace, I guess. I always thought taxes were low on the list of businesses, but I can understand if you don't have access, good access to the highways, might be a problem getting businesses to come in, but like I said, I, even with the single tax rate, I haven't seen much change there. Now, the small commercial exemption, wouldn't that help with a split tax rate? Because now you are, and this is the first time I've heard about this one, now, if you split the tax and you put the burden on commercial, but you give a small commercial exemption, now you're giving the small mom-and-pop businesses, which I've been told in the past, if we split the tax rate, we will hurt the small mom-and-pop business, but now we have a small commercial exemption. Wouldn't that help the small business, mom-and-pop business?
If it was to go to the small businesses, unfortunately, it goes to the owner of the property who's renting, and most businesses are not housed in buildings they own. I think, you know, we have some vouchers here that would probably voucher that. So that, you know, in theory, sounds like a great thing. I agree. I think it's awesome if it was reworded and the law was changed.
Yeah, okay.
Because it doesn't benefit most conventional business owners, mom-and-pop type businesses, it does not. They just recently did change it so sole proprietorships can qualify, but again, you have to own the building you're in. It cannot be a residence. So it eliminates a lot of people, and it's just, it's really written poorly, I think, with some work at legislature, which I know we have studies here, there are towns that have had studies done, and they've suggested new language that mandates that exemption be passed on to that property, to the business owner. But until they make those changes, it's really not a great law, so.
All right, I think I'm all set. Thank you.
All set. Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? Councilor Steves, then Councilor Rivas.
I can go to Councilor Rivas first, can I?
I'm sorry?
She can go first.
Very good. Councilor Rivas.
Thank you, through you. I had a question on the residential exemption. Have you seen other towns that do this, and what are, what is sort of the impact on renters?
I read some studies, I don't know of any around here that do it, but in my research on the different options, there was one community, or they had asked a few of the communities that had it, a lot of the complaints were the verification process and the implementation And the communities that generally, I think there's only like five communities that actually do it, and they're all up by Boston. Martha's Vineyard is one, that's why I had mentioned that. That was the biggest complaint that I heard about, was the implementation. Those communities also are very high-end communities, so the impact on the high end's going to be less because you have a lot smaller group of low-end properties. We have a huge group of low-end properties here, so it would be a really significant impact to the high-end homes. And that's, that's a big scenario right there, that just doesn't make us really suited for it.
Thank you. I had one more question.
Yes?
You mentioned other discounts, like senior discounts and other discounts to look at. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
I don't have enough information with me, but I'd be happy to attend other meetings to go over different options that are out there, because there's new circuit breaker You can, oh gosh, what is that? There's a, like a town home rule, you can pass home rules to kind of create your own exemption scenarios, but we can get, that's like a whole, whole nother topic. Yeah, and again, no matter what, all these things require future thought and planning, not a last-minute decision on the spot. It's, you know, there's a lot to think about, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Councilor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions that kind of follow up on some of the questions that I asked earlier. One of them is, let's see here, you mentioned that the, when you, during your presentation, you mentioned that the movable or non, if I can read my own notes here, the non-permanently attached material to the land stuff is what's considered personal property?
Yeah.
I always thought that that included solar panels.
Solar panels, yes.
It does, okay.
Yes.
I thought so.
Yep.
Okay, and so, to kind of tie into that, can we, do we have some more information on how much of the, the actual growth was from the solar panels and that kind of development versus actual buildings? I mean, you did provide a list of stuff.
Yeah, I think those, I think the solar was all last year's growth, that's why. It's not on my list. That was captured last year before I came on board.
It was.
Yep.
Because I noticed.
Because the last one was the one on, was it Lebanon Hill or, oh gosh, was ZPT?
Dresser.
There's like.
Dresser Hill?
What's that?
Dresser Hill.
Dresser Hill, thank you.
Okay, because there's nothing up on Lebanon Hill, fortunately. I live up there.
New town, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
And those were new, they were already on the books when I came in, so the growth would have been from the previous year.
Okay, okay. Also, I was curious, you mentioned the residential being 81% and CIP is 19, and you mentioned that the community you're in has almost, almost 100% residential. Do you know what the highest CIP percentage that you know of is?
Uh, no, I don't know of any.
You don't know? Because I need, I know that the towns that I've seen, they rarely get above like 80, like 75, 25, if they even get that far?
Yeah, I don't, and I don't recall what the ratios were, but I came from very small communities.
Sure.
That were farming communities, so we didn't have a lot of commercial and industrial.
Right.
Most of our personal property was tractors.
Okay.
Not kidding.
Okay. Let's see here, also, I was curious, looking at the numbers, and by the way, the presentation that you provided in the packets was very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A lot more, there was honestly a lot more detail than I think we've seen in previous years. And in your packet, in the packet data, you noted that there were 126 single-family, 126 single-family houses sold.
Yeah.
And I was curious about, why is it that if such a relatively small percentage of the town's single-family houses sell, how come they have such a huge impact on the property values of everyone else who has no intentions of selling?
Well, because we do mass appraisal.
That's really not fair to those of us who aren't going anywhere.
Right. No, I get it, it's, it is, it's hard to grasp, but that's the part of mass appraisal, so we have to have a method to value properties, so we have to have at least five sales from every class in order to use those sales. So if I have five single-family sales, I'm going to use them to apply my cost methodology across the board. So there's cost tables built into our CAML database that are adjusted based off those sales. So we look at those sales, and we try to look at them from every angle, look at the, what type of property was it, what neighborhood was it in, what was the age of the property, the condition of the property? And then we, we try to determine all those factors from those sales, what elements of that property contributed to its value, so that we can then adjust our cost tables across the board. It's not a perfect system. The more sales we have, obviously, the more accurate it is, but that's why we have an abatement process. If you get swept up in that process where we're doing mass appraisal and your house really should be here, but you brought up to here, you file for an appeal, and we're happy to take a look at that, because we do get it wrong on properties. We don't always know the exact condition of that property, because we haven't been able to get in, or we haven't been there in a while, or you made updates, or you had a fire. You know, we don't always know.
And is there anything in the law that can, as I kind of, kind of, send a signal, is there anything in the law that would allow for the fact that people have no intentions of selling? Because you're, because I mean, I don't think any of us on the, on the dais here planning going anywhere. Most of the people in town don't plan on going anywhere.
It's kind of a difficult thing to prove your intentions.
Granted, it is, it is hard, I can understand, it is kind of hard to prove until they actually do it, but.
Yeah.
Let's see, anything else I wanted to ask? Oh, and also, to dovetail with what Councilor Rivas asked, when, I think it would be a good idea to have you come forward and talk a little bit more about some of these other options, like she suggested. Are there, it seems like most of the options that are available are for seniors or veterans. Are there, are there things in the law for, for other, for just general citizens?
Not that I'm aware of. We could, I mean, there's, you know, there are things we can expand upon. The senior volunteer program that we have can be expanded to veterans, so that's something. I mean, it's, for the average residential property owner, not really. I don't, I'm not, most of them are income qualifying, age qualifying, but I can certainly look into some other, you know, maybe there's some creative scenarios that we could consider or at least discuss for future talks, you know, that, the new senior circuit breaker exemption, that's brand new, but again, it's age qualifying and income qualifying. But again, there's that home rule, home rule petition that may allow us to do things, and that stuff that I can look further into. I had, didn't research it for this presentation.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that. Because I was thinking that maybe we could use that to help us with, not only helping people that, that may have issues, but also encouraging people to get involved in town affairs, if we can figure out some way to legally allow for, I think I kind of brought this up at a previous council meeting, although I don't think you were there, about the idea of tax breaks for people who get involved on our boards and commissions and various other, various other volunteer opportunities in the community.
Yeah, I mean, I know what kind of stipends are offered for different boards, but that's certainly one, like those, you know, that's a different thing, but it's incentives, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilor Aslo.
A lot of interesting discussion. The tug-of-war is going to continue in Southbridge. When we talk about revenue, we have to run the town, taxes, grants, federal money coming in, state money coming in, you balance up this big chunk of revenue to try and spread the revenue amongst certain things to run our departments, maintain our buildings and roads. You've constantly saw debate up here on roads and sidewalks, town hall, various other things. I'm voting for a single tax rate. You're the first assessor in my time that have come forward, recommended that, but I, I do understand some of the questions, some of the previous speakers spoke about an imbalance of maybe one property to the other. The bottom line comes down to is, the residential makes up 45%. So with that in hand, trying to spread what I call the financial burden onto the taxpayer, you would keep it a single tax rate, try and enhance business to come in town, as we do with P and D and various other, we've been working diligently to make it a destination to open up here. We're going to continue that. The thing that throws us a curve is, we're a little city. We're not a rural town. My whole life, I've always saw us have city problems, the neighborhoods, the blighted areas. It's kind of like a small little city. We don't qualify for rent control because we're not over 50,000, so we battle this. This is, the economic pendulum has now swung, where our values are up and we own houses that are worth a lot of money. That pendulum, if you wait long enough, will swing back the other way.
It's already showing, showing signs, yes.
Right, and there are going to be a lot of houses underwater, because the values, they loaned up to certain amounts. Moving forward, preserving what you have in Southbridge for industry and business will always be, the single tax rate's the way to go. But as far as residential, the pain on some of the elderly, some of the low-income areas, I mean, those are areas that we've been fighting for years to try and make better, try and help out, incentives to work on Election Day for a tax break or various things that's brought up. Town's already done a lot of that. But again, tonight, we can talk and talk, but the bottom line comes down to is, it's going to come down to a single tax rate or a split tax rate. And to me, we really don't have an option. The only good option for the town of Southbridge is a single tax rate. Thank you, and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Montigny.
Thank you very much. I just had a note that probably, it wouldn't be relevant to talk about later, the number and the presentation of 1.2 to 1.3 million that we could have taxed.
On the excess levy?
Right. If I understand correctly, I'm not sure who this question is for, but through you, it's more than half of, you know, what we need for a trash contract if we were to keep things the same. Was it ever considered during the studies to potentially, you know, cut 500 or 700,000 from the budget to meet the numbers it would cost for trash?
Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the question, Councilor, and I'll try to answer the best I can. Understanding that 1.2 million dollars was, what, eight, $900,000 last year, and then $400,000 the year before, you just don't know how much you're going to have in that, that tax levy. So what you don't want to do, my recommendation only, is spend that money that could possibly use for a major event that hits us hard, and we're going to tax the people if we do that tax levy, we're going to increase it, so that 1597 is going to go skyrocketing up. I just, my worry is, if you use that one-time thing, it's not going to happen next year, you're going to have to pay for it again, and it's going to double itself each, each time that we can't use it. Hope that kind of explains it, but that 1.2 million dollars this year, maybe $200,000 next year, so.
Thank you, just to wrap it up, I just, you know, always looking for ways to avoid a potential two and a half override. I saw the number, it kind of piqued my interest, but thank you for the explanation, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Very good. Councilor Steves.
Yes, thank you. Another question that I, I meant to ask, and I kind of forgot until now, which was, I emailed you and, and the manager, I saw, I saw it, about the idea of doing stabilization to reduce the tax bills. Could you, could you talk about that a little bit, and what kind of, what it, what kind of impact it would? Because I know we have more than 5 million in stabilization. And I know that generally speaking, it's not looked on as, as a good financial policy to do that, and on the long term, I probably don't think we should do it on a regular basis either, because it does make sense. But it is also our savings, and as some of the people in our community have seen, the current economy is such where they're dipping into their savings to make ends meet, and maybe as a community, it might be a good idea for us to think about doing that to help them make ends meet, considering they paid, they paid the money that we put into stabilization in the first place.
So I can only answer part of that question.
Okay.
In terms of where money comes from, that's not my wheelhouse.
Yeah.
So that would be definitely more of a Sarnoyes question, or potentially Mike McCall. But I can say, like, I've, I figured on calculations for, if we had an additional 200,000, would be looking at 13 cents per $1,000 savings on the tax rate. So basically. So basically, you know, we can start playing with the numbers, but you're probably looking at, you know, $80 for the average person that would save over the year, $20 per quarter, you know, it's not really significant. So you'd have to really transfer a significant amount of money to really make an impact. And my understanding, and again, this isn't my wheelhouse, is that that can really damage a town's, you know, rating with, for lending purposes. And that's our, that's our security, is to have that fund. You know, I understand relieving residential burdens. I get it. I'm a homeowner. I really do understand. But the health of the community is very important because if we are unhealthy, it's going to impact the homeowners, the residential, it's going to impact everybody in the near future if we don't maintain stability financially. And my understanding is that we're in good shape from where we've come, been, and we've really come a long way. So we want to hinder that for $20 a quarter to a resident. I mean, I'm all for trying to help people as much as we can, but you have to be smart about it. So, okay.
So do you have a rough guess, or maybe, maybe I should go through you to either Mr. McCall or Karen? Do you have any idea what the, what the actual figure that we would have to use would, that would actually make a difference would be? I mean, I'm thinking somewhere in the, I'm thinking somewhere in the million or million five range would probably be the kind of number we're talking.
I would, I would assume so. I mean, I did not run calculations, but I mean, 200,000 is only saving 13 cents per thousand. So I mean, you could have think, you would need a significant amount of money to really offset and make a difference in people's lives.
I believe Mr. Manager has an answer to that. Please.
So I know this question was posed last week and I did respond directly to Councilor Steve's. When we do our finances here in town, we look to the policy directives that we have on file, which were dated back in 2013. There's a couple of policy directives. There's Directive Number Five, which talks about our stabilization balance as well as our overall reserves, which is in Policy Directive Number Four. At that time, when those were put together, we're looking to keep at least 5% of the general operating budget for our stabilization, which is at least $3 million. And if we want to look at an overall reserve policy, the target at that point in time was trying to get between 8 and 12%. So if you look at, we have roughly 5 million in our stabilization now, 1 and 1/2 million in our capital stabilization, as well as we have about 3 million, 1 million in free cash, we're right at about that target of 12. But in that directive, it had said that we should be looking to a future target of about 15%, which would mean we would, we should be increasing some of those numbers. And the reason we would want to do that, the policy directives also talk about, these are one-time monies that we should use in case of emergency with regard to the stabilization fund. But the bond rating companies that set the rate at which we can borrow money for projects for our paving, for the fire station, they look at how we manage our finances, these policy directives, and how we implement them. So if we were to deviate from what we have on paper and start utilizing that rather than an emergency for one-time revenue reduction, that would fly in the face of what they would expect a prudent community to do. Now, I did a little numbers based a lot off of what we heard the other night when Ms. Carney talked about the 200,000, but I took the tax rate and I played with it. If we were to use 500,000 in stabilization, it would reduce the tax rate when it was $17.90 approximately 35 cents. And if you carry that out, that would be roughly around $85 to the average taxpayer's home. So to see roughly a $250 reduction in taxes, you would probably have to use 1.5 million dollars of your stabilization fund, which would probably be right around 30, 35%. I'm just doing rough math off the top of my head. So you would have to take a sizable chunk of that. Now, the problem would be next year, if we still had to generate the same amount of money to meet our tax burden, you know, for the levy, you would then have to replace that 250 and raise it or lower it depending upon what the community's needs were. So it would be a one-time, one-year reduction. And then you'd be back to square one the following year if you had to raise those monies. So it's kind of a slippery slope if you start wanting to use those funds that way. The, I suppose the most prudent thing to do would be to start thinking about whether, how you want to spend your money going forward, if there was areas you want to reduce so that you limit your expenses. That would be, I suppose, the most prudent way to do it rather than take one-time monies to offset anything.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Council Lozlo.
I love the word prudent. If you go back a few years ago, I think the council was very prudent also when, at the end of the year, all budget money was flushed into free cash, not a spending spree like we do for the last 10 years. Everybody run and buy whatever you can buy with leftover money. So to be prudent to the taxpayer, what happened a few years ago was you would, when the budgets are done, you used to go back to the free cash. You would figure out your free cash limit and what the safe yield was for your free cash, for your bonding, and all the number, it's absolutely exactly what the manager's saying. You know, financially, if you dump all your extra money out of your budget, whether you had, you know, and we know that our departments have extra monies in these accounts at the end of the year, instead of transfer and spend, we would divert all that along with the $200,000, which is the taxpayers' money. And to me, that is the way the finances used to work. Since I got on council, it's a little different. Let's get the stuff that we could never get before, drones and stuff like that. I'm not sure if you call that prudent, but I think that the taxpayer is not happy about it. So for me, moving forward, we go with a single tax rate, which spreads the financial pain equally, where everybody's pulling the rope in the town of Southbridge, not putting it onto one sector over another. I know that between the grant writer that we have, she is a machine for bringing monies into town. All these things are good problems to have as far as your state money, your federal money. I mean, a lot of those numbers have been healthy in the few years that we've been, I've been on council, which I say, when the economy is good, everything's good. But the thing I have to give the council credit for is, is always talking about the rainy day. A lot of people don't look for, what happens if the economic pendulum swings back? My value of my house is going to go down, I'm going to have a big loan on it, not me, but a new homeowner in the town of Southbridge, some young fellow has a family, or even the elderly. The houses are paid off and they struggle. If it swings back the other way, right now is a good time to sell, not a good time to buy. You wait about another three years, it's going to be a good time to buy and a bad time to sell. So it's all about the economics. It's all about the way you want to work the numbers. And I think that going forward, we've done a halfway decent job with putting money away for fixing buildings, putting money away for the rainy day. And I think I attribute that to the finance department. And moving forward, we're going to be cautious. I don't think we should go out there. I would spend my money frivolously. Why would I spend the taxpayers' money frivolously? I'm in business. You have to be tight and precise, or as the manager says, prudent, in moving forward. So I think we're in a safe place right now, but the unknown is we're building a fire station. We have to deal with trash pickup. These are some I don't know numbers. They told, I was told it was going to be 25.7 million for the fire station. That's with inflation, back when they proposed it, with inflation percentages and everything. All of a sudden now, we're looking at bigger numbers for eminent domain, bigger numbers for demolition, and bigger numbers for building it. Now, some people are under the perception, some people are under the perception that we can just get more money and if the number's higher. That's not what you told the voters. This whole thing that I comes around to is be prudent to the taxpayer. You told them the story, you sold them a project, which I think is well-deserved and needed, but we have to hold the reins as the government. Because that's why people don't like the government lately, is because of the way they handle money at the federal and state level. At the local level, we have a bigger magnifying glass on our department heads. You see the debate up here on a regular basis with a lot of passion on fixing our town hall, doing our roads and sidewalks. We got to continue that debate. We need input from the public. We're spending your money. And I think that we need that input as Councilor Steve has said, whether it be on the volunteer side or just coming up and giving an opinion. We're one community. We're not individuals. I never thought individuality worked very well ever. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Georgina Teresa Rav, Southbridge. Tonight, you've got the difficult challenge of deciding how you want to set your tax rate and whether you want to split the tax rate. I'm going to use an example of a single-family home versus a multiple-family home. The single-family home, he builds his house, comes here, gets his permits, he pays his taxes, he gets a limited amount of deductions when it comes time to pay his taxes. You take somebody in 40B, K Street, they come to this community, they ask for millions of dollars of tax cuts, they get TIFs, they get federal money, they get state money, and they're still charging a $2,000 a month apartment for a three-bedroom apartment and walking away with the profit. The single-family guy doesn't get to deduct any of his repairs, but he deducts his taxes and his mortgage payment. The guy in the 40B property or the residential, I mean, I'm sorry, the multiple-family people, if its owner occupied, it's a three-family home, they get to deduct 2/3 of everything, pretty much in their taxes. I used to do that when I was a, owned a three-family. You take somebody like Business, they come here, they're able to take and deduct all their personal income taxes that they'll pay on furniture, those kind of things. Me as a homeowner, single-family homeowner, the person out there, not me, I'm sorry, they don't get to deduct their furniture cost. They don't deduct to do any of that where industry does. I'm not so much in favor of splitting the rate. I know it's a difficult decision to make. I've been coming for a long, long time. When I was on council, when it came to this kind of hearing, it was always said that it wasn't fair to the counselors or to the people attending this here, is that you get the hearing at 6:30 in the evening and you start a little bit of a discussion. And in all honesty, the decision is probably made where you're going to vote, but the average Joe out there sees that you make this decision in one little bit. And then you come to budget time, you say, oh, we'll work on that at budget time, we'll fix it at budget time, we'll come up with some honest things at budget time. And that doesn't happen. We're still here tonight, we're going to decide a residential factor, tax rate, in a short period of time. I don't think it's fair to the citizens that you have a hearing and you make that decision in a matter of a couple hours. There should be more of a decision being made. But just, the thing you've got to look at is what's happening. I understand that it's 81% of the residential pays the tax bill in this community. I could be wrong, not 40%, as Mr. Lozlo stated. It's 81% of the tax bill is paid by the residents of this community. And 81% of the residents don't get the deductions and the tax breaks that industry and commercial property has. At the very least, this council needs to look at commercial property as apartments, if there can be some different tax classifications with multiple-family homes. So the multiple-family home pays its fair share equal to what a residential, single-family home does.
Ms. Carney?
I just wanted to clarify a few points that were brought up. Of that 81% residential value, that's mainly, that's single-family and multifamilies. Oh, okay, okay. And then, you know, I understand residential properties don't have the option to write off. I don't get to write off anything at my house, but we do charge for personal property and businesses. So they may be able to write stuff off on their taxes, but we do charge for their computers, their cash registers, you know, there's an excise tax or a personal property tax on any fixtures, furnitures, you go to a restaurant, all those tables and chairs, we tax on all that stuff.
I understand that, but does that mean that they get to drop it off and get the benefits of the tax rate if they're single-family or if they're getting that?
Maybe at the federal or state level, but not the local level. They don't, don't, okay, I'm not familiar with state and federal, so, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? I want to thank the Board of Assessors for their work. This is a very touchy subject. It's not fun by any stretch for anyone to be involved in this, either up here or there, I'm sure. But every year, you folks come through, you do a bang-up job, and on behalf of the councils here and the people in Southbridge, I appreciate your good work, your honest work, and the efforts that you put into it because it really is the basis and the foundation for how the town runs. And I definitely appreciate the work that you do. So thank you very much. Item number eight. Go ahead.
After your vote, I have papers to sign.
Yeah. Very good. Item number eight, citizens forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on an issue not on tonight's
Joseph Dow, 736 West Street. It's my position that anytime someone walk into any of our town office, there should be met with respect. And what can I do to achieve your goal in walking in today? I am making this statement here because I had an experience last week that was anything but that when I walk into the town manager office, our town manager office, to handle a routine transaction, the person addressed me clearly is not, was not able to conduct themselves in a manner that should leave me feeling glad, forget lucky, to be doing business, making significant investment, and taking risk here to grow and share opportunity to serve and employ my fellow citizen. I am upset, yes, but not because it happened to me, but because it happened. I feel strongly the situation must be addressed, not to be punched, but to be more clearly establish an environment that will consistently leave our citizen or anyone conduct business with the feelings that are in good town. I am not wishing to go through all of what has gotten me there, but just to more clearly understand my motive for bringing this up. I am immigrant to this country, to this town. I love, I love it and I want to make Southbridge better from all of us. Thank you for your time.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the previous speaker. We endeavor every day to take the best care of the people that walk in. The incident in question was rather unfortunate. The individual at my counter, at one point, I asked to step outside to calm down the situation. And that person, Mr. Dow, you did not move out when I asked you to. Nevertheless, I will work forward to working with my staff here. But it should be known that that same individual that you're saying was not a good employee on that day or did not have good customer service interaction. About two hours before, I had received a commendation from a local business owner that thanked Ms. Dean as well as my staff member for going above and beyond to help local businesses. So I can't guarantee that every experience that happens in this office or in this town hall is always going to be 100% to the satisfaction of those that walk into the town hall. But I will endeavor to work with the residents, I will continue to work with Mr. Dow, we've talked about this and how to improve, and ensure that every experience is the best. Many of you who come to town hall know that I'm often downstairs and I personally will stop and try and help people. And I do agree that that's the outward face that we should have in this town. I'm just, it's unfortunate the incident played out the way it did, but we will work to do better. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Doyle.
Okay. Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. I sent an electronic version of this book to the I sent an electronic version of this book to the counselors, but if anybody wants a paper one for right now, I have them here. If you want to pass them around and over to, to the minute taker, please, I'd appreciate it. And you can keep it or give it back to me when you're done or whatever. I don't care. Okay, I'm going to continue with the healthy community discussion. Okay, nature-based solutions is a corporate lingo today, but nature came up with them first. We should use nature's nature-based solutions in trying to lessen the effects of our current climate change like, oh, climate change like flooding. Both wetlands and standing forests absorb storm rain and meltwater and store carbon if we let them. Forests need to be left standing. In addition to absorbing moisture and storing carbon, standing forests can stop flooding and erosion onto our roads and properties. They also provide habitat for other on our symbiotic, on our symbiotic planet. Within many forests are vernal pools, which add to the absorptum and habitat function of them. Old-growth forests store the most carbon by hosting lignicolus fungi and lichen in snags and cavities. Lignicolus means carbon integrating, so it's a good new word you can impress your friends with. And these snags and cavities can be home to birds and animals and plants. In New England, these old-growth forests are rare or nonexistent, less than 1% of this region. This booklet, Restoring Old-Growth Characteristics, describes how to create them, since we don't have them, through passive and active management, which allow nature's nature-based solutions to do their thing. Instead of using short-term monetary giveaways that lead to more trouble for the community, think of all the flooding and erosion on Dresser Hill Road in the past few years. Okay, why is it important to leave forest habitat standing? And better yet, adopt the old-growth characteristics? Because many of the plants and animals have evolved in old-growth forests, from the ground cover and the herbs on the forest floor to the cavities and fungi on the textured bark, which, there's a nice picture of it on the cover of this. No, I lost my space. To the canopy structures, the insects, birds, animals, and trees themselves, help us humans to store carbon and water. Taking a landscape perspective is important in attaining these beneficial old-growth and community-based thinking is key. After all, we are all in this together. Some people make individual, short-term decisions, but I will remind you, and quote from page 24 of this booklet, natural disturbances don't start and stop at property boundaries, i.e., a denuded landscape will wash into other properties, rivers, pools, et cetera, so we need to think of our community, ecological and human, when making decisions that will affect both. Let's return to thinking about the next seven generations. So for people out there, the web address to this book is www.masswoods, oh, www.masswoods.org/oldgrowth. And I would point out the table on page 10 and the diagrams on both 12 and 14 to any of the counselors. Oh, and also, I just wanted to point out, this is on a conservation thing, BioMap 3 is out, and it has a super-long address, so I'm not going to say, the best thing to do is search BioMap 3. It's on mass.gov, so you can search from there. It has a lot of conservation options, talks about endangered species, it's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council tonight on an issue not on tonight's agenda? Very good, thank you. Moving on, agenda item number nine. Only in two circumstances beyond the control of the chair, I would entertain a motion to postpone indefinitely this agenda item. Second. We have a motion to postpone indefinitely by Counselor Lozlo, a second by Counselor Steves. Any discussion? Counselor Marketti.
Mr. Chairman, this is the second time this has been postponed, and I do believe we are, we are entitled to an explanation of what's going on with this.
Mr. Manager.
Through you, to Counselor Marketti. Last time, we were postponing based on, we're trying to get additional information, we postponed to a date certain, we're not going to go forward at this point, so we're just not looking for another date.
Well, that's not an explanation. I'd like to know why this is, this person is being, why is this postponed?
It's an HR matter at this point.
Pardon?
It's a human resources matter, it's a personal matter, I'm not going to get into the, but we're just not going to be going forward with this candidate at this time.
Well, if it's a personnel matter, then it should have been brought up at executive session, no?
Well, I'm not divulging it, but it, it just came up this afternoon, so I was told that this person is not going forward this evening.
All right. I mean, this was voted on at DPW, and so far, I've been completely kept in the dark on this, I have no idea what's going on with it. Apparently, some people know what's going on about it, because it's been postponed twice, so if it's, we're not going to vote on it, okay, then we're not going to vote on it. Thank you.
Counselor Lozlo.
I understand. It, it's a personnel issue. I question the people who handled it in the beginning, that we didn't know what we know now, so I think moving forward, we should just mark that down on the calendar as a reminder. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
I'm not sure what that last comment meant, but if the council's so inclined, I'm happy to entertain about a 30-second executive session to discuss this, if somebody truly wants to know.
Counselor Marketti.
Well, are we having an executive session tonight? And could it be discussed at that time?
I mean, we could amend it at that time, but it sounded like you want to know now. If you want to wait, I'm sure we can amend to just go into, discuss bargaining with non-union personnel.
All right. I'm okay with waiting.
Very good. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to postpone indefinitely. All those in favor. Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number 10, vote to endorse town manager's appointment of Marcelino Agüera to fill the vacant disabled commuter representative seat on the WRTA board pending WRTA acceptance of his candidacy.
So moved.
Second. Counselor Steves.
Yeah, we, we recommended that unanimously at GenGov. Mr. Agüera came forward, and he has a lot of experience that is completely relevant to this issue, both in terms of, of the fact that he uses the RTA and the fact that he's got a good background, education, and experience-wise to, to deal with the issues that I think the disabled community would deal with in terms of dealing with RTA, so I think he's a great candidate for that.
Thank you. Counselor Lozlo.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This was an interesting appointment. I saw it at subcommittee. On paper, ultimately qualified, but what we can't measure in this person is his heart. And when he spoke at the meeting, I, I am a people's person where when you look at somebody and he's talking to you, you, you know that, you know, the eyes are the windows to the soul, you look at this gentleman, his heart and soul is in Southbridge, and he wants to do something for Southbridge, and he was excited about it. He spoke from a wheelchair. I know people that are fully healthy that don't volunteer. This was something that I really thought was spectacular. I'm supporting this appointment, and I thank him for coming forward. We need more people like him.
Anyone else? Counselor Rivas.
Yes, so I was also on the subcommittee, and I, I do think that representation from the disabled community is sorely needed in all aspects of our town government. And Mr. Guerra, I was, I was familiar with him, with his name and his reputation from working in the Worcester Youth Center, and it was great to hear from him personally and, and hear about his commitment to wanting to, to help our town, so, yes.
Anyone else? Very good. We have a motion by Counselor Steves and a second by Counselor Adams to endorse this appointment. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number 11, vote to confirm town manager's appointment of Marcelino Guerra to the vacancy on the Commission of Disabilities for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending successful completion of state limits.
Second.
Counselor Steves.
That one came up during the course of the discussion of the previous item, when it became pretty obvious that Mr. Agüera would fit perfectly well into the Disabilities Commission, and the manager mentioned that we had a vacancy available then, and he would fit in perfectly, so we actually amended the agenda to include it and suggested that we put him on it, and we agreed, we thought it would, unanimously agreed to do so.
Now, Mr. Chair, just to add to that, yes, I'd had a pleasant conversation with Mr. Agüera the week before about his interest on the WRTA, and it was apparent, as he was talking, his interest in getting involved in the community that night, as Counselor Steves indicated, that it was apparent he would be a great fit for the Commission on Disabilities, and we talked to him at that time, and he was more than willing to step up and serve there as well, so.
Good. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor. Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number 12, vote to accept the fiscal year 23 Local Cultural Council grant from Massachusetts Cultural Council to the Southbridge Local Cultural Council account in the amount of $23,000 for dates of service July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, and authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Counselor Steves and a second by Counselor Adams. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was supposed to go to an EHS meeting, PND took it over. Just wanted to mention that there was a lot of questions, it was unanimous to obviously move up, move forward to the town council in favor of. Questions were ranged from what was it utilized for, I know in the description it was for the arts, different cultural arts programs within the town itself. We didn't have it represented at the time, but I see Mr. Bartlett is in the back, and I, I know he's been around for quite some time representing Cultural Council, and I'd leave any questions up to him to be able to answer, but I, I highly endorse this as we go along. I believe this is an annual grant as well that we receive for the town. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Mr. Bartlett.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the invitation.
Welcome.
And I appreciate being here. I haven't been here in quite some time. The last time was when I brought in the United States Air Force Band back in 2014, I believe it was. I know that people are always interested in what takes place in Southbridge, and I'd like to just mention a few things here. The Massachusetts Cultural Council was once handled by the Lottery Commission, and in the course of years, it turned out that there was a, an agency called the Massachusetts Council on Arts and Humanities, and they took over from the previous, and from there it became known as the Massachusetts Cultural Council. The Massachusetts Cultural Council provides funds to the entire 351 communities in the state. They do it on a formula that they use, based on population, demographics, and a whole other area that I'm not acquainted with, but in any case, what has happened since COVID is that, beginning with, I noted it down here, beginning with 2020, we had 35 grants, which is about the average we, we see every year. 2021, it dropped to 14, and needless to say, as treasurer of the Cultural Council, I was one who panicked because of the fact we had dropped so low, but in consulting with Boston, they told me that overall, they had not received almost 5,000 usual grants because of COVID. And here's where Governor Baker came in. Governor Baker approached, apparently, the legislature and worked out some plan that would provide the Cultural Council, Massachusetts Cultural Council, more funding. To my amazement, what happened was that in 2021, we had $17,800, which was a big rise in our funding. 2022, they raised it to 20,000, and this year, they raised it to $23,700 for the 23 fiscal year. Governor Baker looked at the economy, and here was his plan in doing so, persuading the legislature to award the Cultural Council more money. When you have a bazaar, when you have a festival, when you have anything that involves the community, you may have businesses around this particular event that would profit from it, and we have seen that, I think, here, because the Autumn Fest that took place in September of this year, I feel was the best that we've had. We've been helping in the Autumn Fest for, I'd say this is the third or fourth year, and we were able to see a lot more people. We had a booth. I, I have to tell you that, for those of you who did not attend, that your chairman was a torchbearer at the Autumn Fest. He was selected by one of the performers, Henry Lappin, a juggler, and this gentleman juggles torches in the air, and he presented two to our council chairman. He did a very good job, and, because he had to light the third one, and he couldn't hold two and light another one. See, that's why you were called, I think, right there. But nevertheless, some of your counselors here did attend, I did see some of you, and we were facing the gazebo, so we were able to see all of the activities, and we had a number of people that stopped. We were pleased with the whole situation. But our contribution is what amazed me, that we had a booth, and for the Autumn Fest, we put out funding and a special funding that Boston gives us in addition to what we give to grants when they apply. We extended funding for a total of $1,688.95 for the Autumn Fest. That included a couple grants that had applied. But again, that money was returned to the community for the benefit of the community. That is one thing that we started quite some time ago. The money that comes into Southbridge stays in Southbridge. If they apply and go to Webster, they don't get funded. They have to perform in Southbridge. The venue has to be confirmed before they apply. And now, I have seen in the last couple of years that the Massachusetts Cultural Council puts that right at the beginning of their application. Confirm what you are doing before you begin to fill the application. So there's no hesitation, and I know, I think it's Dudley or Webster that was the first that I noticed that picked up the venue confirmation before anything, and then it, it must have spread around, I don't know. Now, when we come to December of this year, the holiday vision, the Christmas celebration, the lighting of the Christmas tree and everything else that took place on the Town Common on November 26, we extended over $2,400 for that event, and it, it covered almost all of the events, of the expenditure, I mean, of the, of the evening, because it took care of the Santa Claus, it took care of Mrs. Zeps and her llamas, it took care of the DJ. it took care of the DJ. And we also are presently going to be awarding a check to the Southbridge High School Band. They've been coming and participating every year. And I don't know if any other organization or group, or they get any money donated to them. But we invited them to perform a few numbers on the gazebo, in the gazebo. And I had already mentioned to someone at the high school that we were considering giving the high school band an amount of money. And we decided, the council decided, that we would give them $400 as well. So that check is in the process right now, as the others are too. People are amazed sometimes, and I've been approached on this too, as to, why does the library get so many grants? Well, first of all, if you apply, you have to be a Massachusetts resident. You have to confirm your venue. And it has to be something unusual. And this is where Margaret Morrissey, the director of the library that we have in town, comes in. It used to be, years ago, that she would present the grant, I mean, present the event. And they had to wait a little bit longer because she didn't have the funding. So, I approached her and I said, Margaret, if you want whatever program you want, a summer reading program, a Christmas program, I said, approach the compendium that she has of all these artists and performers. And I said, you have them apply. Takes the onus off of yourself from doing all the work. And regardless of my saying that, she does a lot of that work because she promotes it very well with the contacts that she has on her various sites that she takes care of. And right now, I think this year, I calculated, I think she's getting 17 out of the 37 grants that have applied. We haven't had a chance to meet yet to award the money. But we will be doing it before December 15. As Treasurer, I have a lot of deadlines to meet. And this year, they extended the deadline for grants from October 15 until the 17. And as a result of this, 11,000, I think it was 500 and some odd grants tried to come through towards the end, and their system in Boston crashed. And they were able, finally, to get it up and running again. And the total was fantastic. They've never had that many grants. My contact person told me this. They've never had that many grants in one year that came through. So, all in all, we are fortunate because the legislature, they get their money from the taxpayers. It comes from our grassroots area here. It just goes around and comes back to us. I think we're doing fine insofar as what we're seeing in the variety of programs that go through the library and our ability with the special funding to take care of the Holiday Visions and the Autumn Fest. We've already have a couple of applications I've seen already again for the Autumn Fest. So that is where we stand. And this year, we hope to see a lot more people come to these events. They're free. And so, we hope.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, you said he was a torchbearer, so is that where his mustache went? Just wondering if our chair's mustache ended up getting burnt up over there at the...
No, no, no. But he did a great job. I saw him quite well because my booth was facing the gazebo. I think he was surprised when they approached him.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett, for your many years of service to this town and community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Steves, then Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. Well, two quick questions first, one for Ted. You mentioned that the deadline for application for this round was October 17. How, so, just to clarify, how can, how early do we actually know going for the next round, when people can actually apply? Is it done where you get the applications first and then you apply for the money? Or do they come in and put...
Let me answer two ways here.
Okay.
It used to be all the applications were sent by the individuals who were applying to the individual councils.
Okay.
And they created a system in Boston, a management system, which works beautifully. They introduced it in, I think it was in 20. And it's worked well, where all the applications go to Boston. The local does not have anything to do with the applications at first. They go to Boston, they're put together for all the communities, and then what they call a portal panel is created for the individual councils to be able to see what has been done with applications. However, I'm on the idea that I feel that those members of the councils should be able to not just sit in front of a screen and analyze what's being presented and have difficulty for communication, as we've seen sometimes, virtually, or Zooming, or what have you. And so, I have printed all of the applications, which average about six to eight pages.
Go on, yeah.
And they can produce a couple PDFs for references and endorsements as well. So that's a lot of paperwork.
Yeah, it is.
And I've done it on my computer. And it uses a lot of paper and a lot of ink. That's why they give the councils an administrative fund to take care of expenses in that area. But I had to stop because it was just too, too much. You couldn't get certain pages to really produce because they weren't in the system from the get-go, as one would say. They were endorsements. And it was, so I had them printed, and it worked. That's why they give me an administrative fund. And insofar as the applications, now, when are they available? It's a standard rule that they're available from either the 31st of August or September 1. And they always go to October 15. This year, because the 15 fell on a Saturday, they extended it to Monday at 11:59 PM.
Okay.
And because most people wait till the very end to apply, it crashed. And as a result, they extended it two more days, I believe. And then it was over. And anything that came in after was just lost because of the fact that they have a deadline. And they hold to the deadline.
Good. Thank you very much.
So that's when it works. And then, given a couple days to almost a week sometimes before that portal panel is ready to be produced, then we have to set a meeting before, usually it's before December 15. And we send out denials on a 15-day basis. And any grant given, when we send out the grant acceptance letters in, usually around the 20th of January of the following year, in this case, be January 2023, they have a whole year to set in a reimbursement process. So they're given an ample time to collect all the publicity that they handled and fill out the necessary material, including a W-9. And that's the issue that's come up several times this year. And I have to agree that, knowing that Karen Hanoi is there in the office, but Christine there does a marvelous job, it'd be able to solve some of these problems by contacting the necessary individuals to finish up their reimbursement process. So all in all, it works.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the other, the other point is, I noticed that the agenda item says 23,000, but he said, and the documents we have say 23,700. Is there any particular reason why, why the difference?
No, that was new to me. I made a note of that. I was gonna ask about that after.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to amend it to 23,700?
We have a motion to amend by Counsel Steves, seconded by Counsel Adams, to amend the amount from 23 to $23,700.
And an additional, an additional amount that goes in there is if the grant that was given for the previous year has not been used, for whatever reason. And that happened with the COVID-19, because we had 30 some odd, I think it was 32 or 33 grants. And working with Margaret Morrissey, she and I were able to incorporate all of those that wanted to perform in '21, plus the low number that we had from '21, 14 grants. It worked out beautifully. I think there were only two of the ones that couldn't. So that money that's there goes back into the pool for this year, let's say, if it had happened last year. Every year, there's a little bit of money that slipped through because of circumstances that developed and they can't do it. So, any other questions that I can...
We have a motion and a second to amend the amount from 23 to 23,700, 23,700. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present for the amendment. Okay, I believe Counsel Marquetti, you had some questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you for attending the meeting tonight. And of course, I support this cultural grant. The only thing that I wanted to bring up is that I have had some residents who have complained that they're not, we're not using local talent. They want to know who's deciding what artists play in Southbridge, why more local artists...
It's not coming across very clearly.
Why more local artists aren't being given an opportunity to, to play in Southbridge, aren't given an opportunity for these grants to play at various venues in town. One resident told me that a lot of them come from the Berkshires. I don't know if you've ever, have you ever heard that from anyone, that there's not a lot of local talent? So they want to know who decides, why couldn't be more local talent, and what are you doing to make sure that the local talent does know about this cultural grant? Thank you.
I produced a letter that goes into the Southbridge News, which indicates that we are accepting grants. Boston also pronounces the same thing in whatever way that it can. And from there, we've seen over the years that most of the performers come from the Berkshires. Although this year, we had one from Boston, we had one from the South Shore. And there was one other one. There was, oh, there's one, he's an international performer. And he lives in Quincy, I believe it is. I'd have to look it up, but I'm sure it's Quincy. And he performed at the, at the library. But the venues can be anyplace. We've had them at the Yellum Street Congregational Church. We've had them at La Salle, which is another situation that has been successful for them and for us. Because for the last, I would say it's better than 10 years, we've been funding the children's entertainment at the Festival of Giving Trees. And they also funded, the membership was funding the choral concert for a number of years. I was on the committee for a good 15 years on the Festival of Trees. And I had to abstain from voting naturally when any of these grants came through. But nevertheless, it's a community event.
But I think, I think what some residents have said to me is that they would like to see more local artists.
Well, that's up to them to apply.
And a lot of them, they say they don't know, they don't even know about this to apply.
The ability to apply is open to the public.
And they want to know who's the one that's deciding who's going to play at these local events. But other than that, I am fully in support of this. I would just like to see more local talent. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah. It would be good if more local entertainers would apply. There are some in town. I don't know why they don't apply. That's something I cannot answer. We've had them perform at the community center. I can remember Patty Haddock putting in some requests for some entertainers. So that it, it's a variety of entertainment that's available. But if the community has entertainers and they don't apply, they don't apply.
Thank you. Counsel Rivas.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for all of the work that you do in the Holiday Visions. I want to say that...
And I didn't recognize you that night when you came to see if you could help, but you had a hat on and it was Doc. And I asked, I asked my associate, I said, who was that? And then she says, that's your town council. So I apologize for not recognizing you first.
That's okay. That's okay. I just want to say that I volunteered at the Santa Station. And just seeing the faces of the families and the children there was amazing. And, you know, thinking about, you know, that little bit of money really goes a long way to inspire and to really service our community. So I thank you for all of the work that you do. I am familiar now with the cultural, Mass Cultural Council grants now that I work at Ulster Ridge Village. But my question is, what are some ways that we can help you get some more of that local talent to apply? Are there ways that we can, you know, maybe share information? You know, I don't know if on our town website, we share some of the application information.
I am not sure if Margaret Morrissey has not put in word on the Southbridge site. Because she does put in an awful lot of things available to the public. We're very fortunate to have such a library that we have. It's really a community center for activities.
Absolutely. I agree. Margaret is amazing. I just want to be able to offer our help in whatever way that we can. Because I do agree with Counsel Marquetti that we want more local talent and we do have...
And there is talent in town. There's no doubt about it.
Great. Counsel Lozo.
I just want to take a quick minute, just to thank you for your years of service. And thank you for what you do for the town of Southbridge. Thank you.
It's been fun. I enjoy it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you at the next Autumn Fest.
I'll be juggling. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 13, vote to appropriate $10,000 to Recruitment and Processing Account Number 001910-534600 to cover additional costs for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozo, second by Counsel Montigny. Counsel Steves.
Yeah, we recommended that unanimously. Thank you.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 14, vote to appropriate $200,000 to the Capital Stabilization Fund for capital improvements. Motion by Counsel Steves, second by Counsel Adao. Counsel Steves.
Yeah, we talked about that at some length the other day. And there was a little bit of dispute over whether we should be using it to, to give it back to the taxpayers as a tax deduction, or if we should be sending it back to the, to Capital Stabilization to work on a variety. Biggest, biggest issue that we come up with was the roof here. And there's sort of quite, quite a vociferous discussion on that one. And we ended up deciding to send it to the Capital Stabilization.
Very good. Counsel Tom.
Thank you for your, it's a good idea to keep it and use it for the town. But I will agree only if Pacific named that 200,000 for the Town Hall building, not go to Stabilization Fund, and we don't know who's gonna, or where it's gonna be used to. I know I need a third vote, but still, a lot of council here prefer to spend the money on the road while we cannot finish the money we have already from this year. And we'll leave in the Town Hall leaking water. So if that money, it can't name Pacific to the building, I'm willing to vote yes. If not, I'm not gonna vote on it. I'm gonna do, thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lozo.
I'd just like to say, I'd like to commend the Finance Director for bringing this forward. She basically brought it forward as generic, here's 200,000. What do we want to do with it? We have plenty of things that we agree on. Town Hall repairs, road repairs, sidewalks. There are projects throughout the town. The catch-22 on this, 200,000 is, it's, I don't want to prolong it, but the thing is, we had great debate at Subcommittee. There's no need to get upset over it. It is a good problem to have, is what do you do with your money? But the thing is, this money was from the taxpayers. And the optics... And the optics on this is, this is the problem I have with government. If there's 200,000 and we've overpaid towards the town, we have the option of using capital. Because we're doing such a good job on grant writing and various other things, we have a lot of money coming into this town that does not come from the tax rate. So moving forward, I thought it would be better for the government, better for the optics, to send the 200,000 back to the taxpayers, much like Massachusetts did. I mean, Massachusetts sends taxes back to us. It's not that I was gonna run and buy a brand-new cow with it, but I think that when the state says they have too much money and the money should go back, I think optics-wise, it's a good move. So in this case here, I'm gonna be voting against this. I'm gonna be voting against it because I think it should be sent back to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Montigny.
Thank you very much. I'm not gonna be voting for this because I have a list of all the capital accounts, which I'm sure is readily available to anybody, and on there, there's arguably a lot more than 200,000 that is, that could be used to fix the roof. And I don't want to call it dead money, but accounts that have already been, you know, used and expended. And I've inquired about a couple of those through the Chair and the Finance Director, and I've heard that one of them was encumbered already, a couple of them actually weren't encumbered. There's, there's a capital account with $30,000 for Town Hall roof repairs. And I mean, I could, I could find you more than 200,000 tonight if that's what you need money for, is to fix the, the roof. And I'd, I'd feel more comfortable sending it back to the taxpayers too, myself. And I would even be willing to amend this to pull from different accounts. I realize that's probably not what we want to do, but I could, I could name the accounts that some of this money should come from, and I would also like clarification of if we vote no on this, does the money automatically go back to the taxpayers? Because this isn't like money coming from, the chief had $3 million budget and only used 2.8, and now here's 200,000. It's like projections of the, to my understanding, revenues and expenses on the cherry sheet, and it's, you know, I just feel more comfortable sending it back to the town. So is that what a no vote does for clarification, or sending it back to the taxpayers? Sorry, not the town.
Ms. Hanley.
If the council would vote no on this, then the 200,000 would reduce the tax rate.
This year's tax rate.
That's correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other discussion? Counselor Adams, and then Counsel Marketti.
How much would it be for the reduction? For this 200,000?
That would be that, that 13 cents.
That 13 cents per thousand?
Yes.
Thousand? Would we have to make up for that this year then, at 1597? Would that have to be increased then? Or would it have nothing to do with the 2023, 2024 budget, or tax rate? Sorry.
It has to do with the fiscal 2023.
2023. Okay, thank you.
Counsel?
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have actually advocated for this at general government, but I do understand my fellow counselors here to the right. And I think that if they wanted to move some funds from some of these dead accounts, I call them dead, but they're just accounts that have not been used, and I've been advocating for quite some time, let's move those accounts over and put them into Capital Stabilization so we can use them to fix the Town Hall. For instance, I wrote a few of them down. FY13 Town Hall renovation, 50, almost 58,000. FY15, the Town Hall roof, what I do believe the town manager is working on that at the moment. FY18 Town Hall facility, 32 grand. FY18 Town Hall handicap, 99,000.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
I'm gonna state a point of order. What is in front of the council here tonight is the appropriation of 200,000 to the Stabilization Fund. If somebody wants to make a statement that there are other funds in their conversation, that's one thing, but this is the 200,000 either goes to Capital Stabilization or it goes back to the taxpayers. That's what's in front of us. The debate that had at subcommittee had a lot to do with substantive projects. That's not what's in front of us right now. If it goes into the stabilization, the discussion of what to be done with the money out of stabilization is done at another meeting under another agenda item. This is strictly to make a decision. What do you want to do with the 200,000? Stabilization or give it back to the taxpayers? And that's it. Not how many projects, and there's other money somewhere else, that has nothing to do with this agenda item.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I might answer that, it was Counsel Montigny that opened up this can of worms, when he said that there is money in these accounts.
Are you ruling on my point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I am ruling on your point of order, and your point is taken.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if I, I still have the floor, though.
Yes, you do. You still have the floor.
So, as I said, if these counselors have a better idea, I would certainly compromise and, and vote to put it back, send it back to the, to the residents. But this Town Hall needs work, and 13 cents is not very much money when you look at what this Town Hall needs. When I look over there at Counsel Adao, and I see water dripping down that wall during a rainstorm, or when I pull onto the front parking lot and I see a park at your own risk, I say to myself, this Town Hall needs work, and I am willing to donate 13 cents so, so we can fix this Town Hall. And to Counsel Adao's point, if this council wants the Town Hall fixed, you better believe that the Capital Planning Committee is gonna use this money for the Town Hall. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lazo, I believe you were next.
It's not going to the Town Hall Fund, first of all. Great sales pitch. What I'm trying to say again is, if you went to one of your accounts and you overpaid them by 200, and they catch them to the, the overpayment, you send the payment back to the person. I'm not arguing those other projects. I'm with you. I'm with you 100% on everything you're mentioning, but what's in front of us tonight is you'll make 200,000 look like it's nothing to the taxpayers or to the Stabilization Fund. That's the vote in front of us. This going to the Stabilization, Stabilization Fund does not guarantee it goes to any projects. That is something to be decided later. When the, when the concept comes up, we will take it up with Mr. Montigny's suggestions, we'll take it up with our Finance Director on other things, as capital improvement, maybe, where there's about a million and a half. There's plenty of money in the budget. We've taxed the taxpayers. Now it's time to give them their 200,000 back. Even if it's one cent, it's right and wrong is what I'm talking about, not whether a flavor of a project. So let's vote, let's vote no on this. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Adao, then Counsel Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I agree with Counsel Lazo, but this is not like when you pay your bill extra 200, you get it back. This is here, it's, what you're gonna give back the taxpayer, it's just a small amount, and maybe, yeah, this small amount mean a lot for them, but the concern is, you give them back today between 50 to 70, and next year, you charge them 500 because we have an improvement for the Town Hall. The whole idea is, you take those 200, you apply them, and next year, you added another 50. I think that's a better idea, from giving them 50 and, and charging 500 next year, just to look good this year, we'll give you back some tax money, and they already pay it, and I think they already forget about it. I think we should keep them, just make sure they're coming to the town, because the town, that's their representative for the people in Southbridge. If they're town, they're home, safe and clean, they're safe and clean, I believe. You walk in the Town Hall, I mean, I'm getting free shower, I'm still getting the water bill sent into my house. I walk out to the parking lot, I look up, a brick and fallen down, pretty soon, somebody's gonna get hurt, some roofing is gonna come out. I mean, what are we waiting for to fix it? How many years, we keep saying, we don't want to improve the Town Hall because we're gonna, we don't want to raise the tax on the people? I heard it from you, Counsel Lazo, a few times already when I came here. So I prefer that 200, if we can amend it, to go to where you, wherever you want to put it, but make sure, put the word, it's used for the Town Hall. Thank you.
Counsel Rivas.
I think originally, in the subcommittee, I was in agreement with Counsel Lazo and Counsel Montigny, but in getting all of the data, we want real relief for taxpayers. 13 cents, you know, it makes a difference if, in the long run, people are gonna have to pay more money, then we're not really giving them any relief just for optics sake. And so I do think that we do need to invest it in the Town Hall, we do need to invest it. We have a lot of different projects. I don't disagree that some of the other monies, you know, should all be kind of pulled together and see, you know, what projects need to, need that money to go to them. But just for the sake of giving 13 cents, I think people would be offended, like that's a slap in the face to people that need real relief. And if, in the long run, we're going to tax them double, you know, because just to give them 13 cents on a thousand, I think that that's a disservice that we're doing. So I, I will vote for this tonight.
Counsel Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, if we send this back to the taxpayers, it doesn't mean we have to tax them more next year. The tax rate will be set, we will set our tax rate and our percentage that goes in. At the end of the year, when we talk about real tax relief, as we come around the tail end of this year, and we end our fiscal year, and all of our budgets have different accounts full of money, that should be reverted back to free cash, and a portion of that, or all of it, should go back to the taxpayers. That's how the concept works. It's 200,000 here, it might be 50,000, 100,000, depending on our town budgets. We know how this works. At the end of the year, there's gonna be a mad rush of, what do we do with all the money that's left over in these accounts? Send it back to the taxpayers. That's all I'm saying. That's the way it used to be done, and we don't do that now. It's like, okay, let's spend what we have, we'll re-tax them next year. And that's why, when we think this is gonna go towards the roof, no, the roof is already funded. It's in the budget, and our DPW director did nothing about it. The money sits there because she can do the project. And when your Finance Director comes to you and says, "Don't put any money in any of the projects because we have a lot of money in all the other projects." So what we have to do going forward is the accountability, oversight, and, and to keep working what our Finance Director is, to dust out those corners of those accounts, use them for projects that are already funded, such as the roof and Town Hall. I think we have a, a good problem here. We have too much money. And I've talked to one of my fellow counselors, why he said, "The concept in the optics of taking the taxpayers' money and just, okay, I'm sorry, this year, we have 200,000 too much, for whatever reason, let's, let's use it for something else." That's just what we've been doing with all the accounts that maybe we overbudgeted in the last year's budget. So going forward, I'd like to make the turn, you want to call for a tax cut, that's one thing, but if you want to talk about free cash like this, or cash mount, go back to the taxpayers, there's other monies. This 13 cents could be much larger. But that depends on the council. That's why I respect our Finance Director. She came up and said, "Look, this is what we have, what do you want to do with it? Vote your conscience, long as you sleep nights, we're all good. There's nothing to be mad about." Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Can I amend it to the money to be moved to the Capital Stabilization Fund for use of the Town Hall?
You wish to make an amendment.
Amendment?
Would you just repeat that for me?
200,000 to be put in the Capital Stabilization Fund to be used for the Town Hall.
We have a motion by Counsel Adao, and a second by Counsel Steves to amend the motion to state that the 200,000 goes...
To Capital Stabilization specifically for the Town Hall.
Goes to the Capital Stabilization Fund for use for the Town Hall.
Can do that? I don't know.
You just made the amendment. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question to Ms. Hanley. Can we actually do that?
I don't think we can actually do that, but with the understanding, we have Counsel Marketti here as a member, I'm a member of it too, I mean, obviously, I would vote with, with respect to what the council would want us to use the money for.
Right.
I mean, there's a couple of other members of the, of the committee, but, you know, I'd hope that they would respect that, you know, that this came with the recommendation, not that we can vote it that way, but that's what it's to be used for.
Counsel Steves.
Just a clarification. How much do we currently have in Capital Stabilization?
About a million five.
Million five. And how much do we have in the various other accounts that are just sort of sitting there? Do you know, roughly?
Well, I, you know, I don't want to get into that too much because, you know, but some of those accounts we, we are using, like, like the one, even though it was appropriated in, in fiscal, whatever it was, 13 or whatever, we are using the Town Hall renovations for the carpets. So some of those we are still using. So the Capital Committee really needs to sit down and make some recommendations to move it and come to council with those recommendations.
Okay, okay.
All right, Ms. Hanley, am I clear in that you said that we cannot make the motion that we, the amendment that we just did?
That's correct.
Then we're gonna rule the motion out of order.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment on that. I think what she's saying is that we can't necessarily, it's not so much that we can't make the motion per se, it's that it may not necessarily, it won't have legal force, but I think, I think from what she was saying, as I understood it, it would basically be kind of a suggestion of the will of the, of the intent of the council for this particular fund. It may not necessarily have legal force.
I understand what you're saying, but I am gonna make the motion, the ruling that this amendment is ruled out of order and not acceptable. Counselor Adams.
No, I was just gonna say, it's gonna go to the Capital Stabilization Fund if, if it's voted yesterday. That's their job, that the committee's job, to make that recommendation to the Town Council in the end. Town Council's ultimate responsibility is to vote in favor of or not of that recommendation. So I think we need to just move on with this.
Counsel Montigny.
Just a quick point of clarification to, to Counsel Steves. I believe there's over $2 million in capital accounts, various, everywhere, just to answer your question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the original motion, vote to appropriate 200,000 to the Capital Stabilization Fund for capital improvements? Very good. Roll call.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Adao?
No.
Counselor Lazo?
No.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Montigny?
No.
Counsel Rivas?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Rivas. Oh, sorry. I had to go back to the beginning. I knew I was gonna mess that up.
No.
No.
Voting no.
Four, five, six, seven, eight.
The motion is split, four to four. The vote is four to four. The motion fails due to a tie. Very good. Item number 15, vote to establish a tax classification factor of 1.0, a single tax rate for fiscal year 23 tax purposes. The Board of Assessors recommends a yes vote for the single tax rate.
So moved.
Motion, motion by Counsel Adao, second by Counsel Steves. Very good. Roll call.
Counsel Adao?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
No.
Counsel Montigny?
Yes.
Counsel Rivas?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel?
Yes. Motion passes seven to one. Item number 16, vote to establish a tax classification of property for fiscal year 23 tax purposes for an open space discount. The Board of Assessors recommends a no vote.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Steves. Very good. Roll call.
I'm having trouble keeping up with you guys. Counsel Marketti?
No.
Counsel Montigny?
No.
Counsel Rivas?
No.
Counselor Steves?
No.
Counselor Adams?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Da, Dow, excuse me. Sorry.
There's a vote out of order here, we need to, we need to revote. Let's revote. We'll revote from the beginning.
All right.
Wrong motion fifteen.
Fifteen.
On sixteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
No.
Counselor Rivas?
No.
Counselor Steves?
No.
Counselor Adams?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Dow?
No.
And Counselor Lazo?
No.
Very good. Eight all emotion is defeated by zero eight. Item number seventeen. Vote to establish a tax classification of property for fiscal year twenty-three tax purposes for a small commercial exemption. The Board of Assessors recommends a no vote.
So move.
Second. Motion by Counselor Lazo, second by Counselor Montigny. Discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Montigny?
No.
Counselor Rivas?
No.
Counselor Ryan? Excuse me, Counselor Steves?
No.
Counselor Adams?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Dow?
No.
Counselor Lazo?
Yeah, no.
And Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Yes.
By one, seven, the motion fails. Item number eighteen. Vote to establish a tax classification of property for fiscal year twenty-three tax purposes for a residential exemption. The Board of Assessors recommends a no vote.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Lazo, second by Counselor Steves. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Rivas?
No.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Dow?
No.
Counselor Lazo?
No.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
And Counselor Montigny?
No.
By two to six, the motion fails. Item number nineteen, discuss or provide an update on the church at Thirty Charlton Street and vote endorse a course of action. Mr. Manager.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I know Mr. Julian is here this evening. Mr. Tetro had a family illness and could not be here. I also have knowledge that Mr. Rivera is here this evening from Rivera Real Estate that owns the properties at Thirty Charlton. We did make contact with him earlier in the week, just to clarify that he would be here and remind him that he needed the Section thirty-four report from his engineer. And so, both of the gentlemen are at the podium. Your pleasure, which one you want to hear first?
Mr. Rivera, let's hear what you've got to say. What progress have you made?
Good evening, everyone. I do have the report drafted here that you requested. And also, what you requested was the town to pay the outstanding police detail. That was paid as well. So, from here on, we've just got to see where we're going to, you know, go on trying to get these repairs worked on, you know, get the church, you know.
So am I clear? You've paid for the detail and you've created, and you've come up with an engineering report?
Yeah, I have, yeah, yep, a draft that he gave me, with short notice being with the Thanksgiving holiday, you know? If he has to tweak anything, you know, he's, you know, he just told me to, you know, give him a call, see how the meeting goes and so forth, so that we can get this ball rolling.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Rivera? Counselor Steves?
Um, yes. First off, has, has our building department or, has our building department had a chance to see this report yet?
No, I actually, he sent it to me about four o'clock this afternoon, and I haven't actually read it completely myself, but I will email it first thing in the morning to everybody, you know, that needs to see it. But, I mean, he's, everybody, I mean, he's more than welcome to take a look at it briefly.
So can, you, you said you haven't had a chance to read it yet?
I haven't, you know, read it myself because again, you know, I was trying to come and, come to this meeting, and he told me that, you know, it'll be in my email, so by the time I, I saw it in my email, I had to print it, and then I started heading out there.
Okay.
So, I mean, I briefly went through it, but, you know...
Did anything jump out at you from what you did scan over?
I'm sorry?
Did anything jump out at you from what you scanned over as far as what he was saying about the property and so forth?
No, 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 it's just, you know, typical codes and, you know, and his recommendations, you know, it's, it's in there, you know, just to get, you know, get the repairs done, you know?
And who, who was the engineer that did this?
RAV Associates.
RAV, RAV?
RAV, R-A-V.
RAV.
Yes.
Where are they from?
Newton.
Okay, okay.
Newton, 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 was it? Newton, yeah. And, you know, they work with Burnn Consulting, you know, so, you know, they, they both, which was the original engineer that gave me the, the original report that was requested in the beginning of this whole process. And they've done, he said he's done projects here in Southbridge, you know, Springfield, Worcester. I mean, you can research him if you like.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with him, but... Thank you.
All right. Mr. Julian, any impressions?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Any, any impressions or recommendations at this point?
Well, it'll take a few days to review all this and go through the code compliance. He has it done as a level-two alteration. Mr. Tetro and I both felt it was going to be a level-three. So, once I do the code review of it all, I'd have more recommendations at that point. However, I do also need a building permit application, insurance and liability papers. This isn't enough just to issue a building permit for the repair. Other than that, I need just time to review what he did submit.
Counselor Steves.
Um, how much time would you need to review it? How much time would you need to review it?
Once I have all the paperwork, a couple of days.
Okay.
So I need the building permit application. Like I said, I need the insurance papers from the contractor. I need contractor's licenses. I need verification of all taxes, water, sewer bills are paid. Once we have that, then we can move forward if the council so chooses to allow him to do, go this route versus taking it down.
And just to clarify, you mentioned a level-two versus a level-three. You said you described it as being a difference between a level-two and a level-three project. What does that mean?
In existing building, there's different levels of alteration. You have one, two, and three. If you go to a, a level-three alteration, basically everything has to be brought up to code. We're not looking for a complete level-three alteration there.
Okay.
It's just the, the immediate danger, which is the veneer blockwork or stonework that's on the outside to make it safe. Moving forward though, depending, he has it down that he's going to do a B, a use, use group B, which is business, and not assembly, which is what a church would fall under. So, once I do the code review, we can answer furthermore, you know, more questions.
If it's, if he's, if he's proposing that, would that also require a zoning change?
I'm sorry?
I said if he's proposing, proposing a change from, from, to a use group, that change that, come on, brain. If he's proposing a change of that kind of use, would that require to go, A, going through the planning board, and/or B, a zoning change?
Yes. Yes. I believe that area is zoned for business, so it wouldn't need to go in front of the zoning board, but it definitely has to go in front of the planning board for a special permit to reinstate the use of the building, because it's been vacant for more than two years, so it's lost any grandfathering. And obviously, the diocese sold it, and once they sell it to a private individual, it's no longer considered a church at that point, it's just another structure.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lazo, then Counselor Dow.
How long will it take you to formulate this? I don't want to sit here and discuss and discuss and discuss. If we need to postpone, I'll make a motion to postpone for you to revert, review all the materials. Do you need time? Would you have a recommendation tonight?
I can review the material in a day and a half, two days, once I have all the material. I don't have all the material in front of me. I'm still waiting on a building permit application. I'm going to need insurance papers so we can verify the insurance of the contractor, licenses from the contractor, so I can verify those. And then again, water, sewer, and tax bills have to be verified through the tax collector's office. So once I have that, in two days.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Dow, then Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Are we playing a game in here? What are we doing? How much time we're going to keep giving? Every time we open the case, we have one paper, okay, we're going to extend. I think we make, we make, we, last meeting, we, we did make a, a final decision, come up with all the payment, where he owned the town, and he should, he should have the permit already submitted to the building inspector. I, I feel like we're playing games, like, okay, tomorrow I bring another paper, and then I get away with it for another month, you know? Tomorrow, holiday coming up, Christmas and New Year, I, I didn't do it because, you know, holiday, people close, town hall, whatever. I mean, enough is enough. I think we did, we did make the comment last time, last meeting, we say we need a paper already submitted to the town official inspector, and it didn't happen. Now he bring, have a paper, it doesn't have a contractor name, no license, no liability insurance, no permit application. I, I don't feel safe anymore. Why do we wait until somebody get hurt, somebody get killed? That's when we make a decision? I think we need, we need to move forward. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
Um, I guess through you to Mr. Rivera. So when, when do you think you can actually make sure you provide...
Gentleman here is right with the games. I don't know, what do you guys keep wanting me to get? You tell me last meeting, you wanted this document, you wanted something else. In the beginning of this project, when this first happened, you guys wanted an engineer report saying it's not going to topple over. The permits would, would be an issue getting the permits. Now you're talking about you want, you want proof of the, the, the insurance from the contractor, so on and so forth. You want the building safe, or do you want to keep, like he says, playing games, going back and forth? When are we going to get it? I mean, all that would be, when it's time, you accept him going in to pull the permit, he'll go in tomorrow, pull the permit. He'll give us insurance, of course, he'll give all his licenses and so forth and so forth, you know, so on. But what, what do you want from me? You know what I mean? I mean, I'm trying to get this building up and running, you know, I mean, not up and running, but repaired for the safety, so-called safety of the community, but you keep, you keep throwing, you know, something else, you want this, you want that, he needs to review it. I can understand, everybody, he needs to review it. That's not a problem. But when you go review it and you approve it, then contractor goes and pulls his, his permits.
That's what I was going to ask you, Mr. Rivera, is when you could do that? Based on what Mr. Julian just said? You just, you, okay, you just said that he, that your contractor can go in tomorrow and pull the paperwork?
Absolutely. But he's saying that you need this, you need that, you need...
Once that's done, he can review the paperwork. That's what the law sets. He can only do certain things under the law.
Right.
And it's a really long list of stuff, but...
You, you got two reports from two different engineers. What more do you need? This gentleman hasn't even gone into the building itself, literally inside the building.
I haven't gone into the building because we deemed it unsafe. The paperwork I'm asking for as far as insurance, licenses, that's all standard paperwork that's asked for every single building permit. And typically, we get the engineer report when it's submitted with the building permit application, the liability insurance certifications from the insurance company, copies of the license, it all comes in as a package. We review it, we approve it, or we disapprove it, and that's the way it goes.
Does that make sense?
Simple.
That's what we're looking for.
You said that in the last meeting?
That's what we're looking for.
All that that would have been submitted, but what I'm saying is, you...
You have a licensed contractor who should know all of this right up front, it's in the code book.
But you requested two things.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
Thank you. Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. I share the frustrations of Counselor Dow as well, and, and like everybody said, this is all standard procedure when it comes to this, and there, there's no runaround here that we were ignored and everybody went ghost for like five months straight, and there weren't, there wasn't any action taken until October, November, and the, the person didn't feel like we even had to be notified that that was happening until we had to hunt them down, refusing certified mail. And, I mean, this, this is crazy from our standpoint, not from the owner of the, of the building's standpoint. And I, I agree with Counselor Dow completely. Thank you.
Counselor Lazo.
You bring up what do we want? You want a paper, you want this? I do that for a living, I'm a structural licensed contractor in the state of Massachusetts. When the building fell, I was under the impression they give you the time to fix the building. That includes an, an engineering study, how safe is it, that, which determines how much of the building you're going to take down. But we all knew something had to do with the towers at that point. So if we go back and do the history, everybody agrees the towers had to come down. To what level? We didn't know. That's why we need an engineer to come in and say, "We're going to take it down to the sound area." And as far as I'm concerned, you need to come in with the engineering study, not only the engineer just tells you what to do to make it a safe building. This gentleman behind you is, is basically a safety officer to town, and of all buildings, he is the one that says, "Take it down." He tells me, "Take it down," I'm going to take it down. If he feels that this is not going to take place, if something happens because we waited, and some kid went behind the fence, and another portion came down, this is a little more serious than money, like somebody's child. So, moving forward, I think we all knew what we wanted and what we needed. We needed a safe building. The beginning part is the engineering, the construction is the second part. That's all part of making it a safe building.
I, I understand.
Now, moving forward, and I missed the last meeting, and there was discussion of mail not being opened, there was discussion of various stuff. I am the most understanding guy with business. I'm pro-business, I, I want buildings to be restored. This gentleman here works hand-in-hand with a lot of people in town. When they show good faith movement towards a project, he's one of the best inspectors that we have and have had. I, I deal in many towns. They'll give you as much time to get it done, but when you show you're not getting it done, it's not a safe building. How long has it been since the original date? We were all standing in front of the church. Been a lot of time. We build buildings in that time. So moving forward, I would love to have the inspector tell me, give him thirty days, and I'll get this paper. Give me another two days and another special meeting. I need to be directed by him, I listen to him. I, I, I am sympathetic to your cause. I don't believe government should always be in everybody's business. But at the same time, when the business is safety, then we belong there. And I, I know that through the inspections code. So, you know, everything's put in the building code 'cause somebody got hurt. And now, we're at that point, and when he enforces the code, as far as I'm concerned, whatever he says goes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Any further discussion? Counselor Stevens.
Given what both Mike Julian and Mr. Rivera have said, and what Scott was saying, or everyone else seems to be saying, it seems like, and just let me throw this out there for a second, um, it seems like we might be, and it's maybe I'm stressing might, be willing to extend this to Thursday. If we had a special meeting posted for Thursday evening to specifically deal with this, I don't think I would be willing to go any longer than that. How does anybody else think about that?
Counselor Lozlo.
Mr. Chairman, can I get the inspector up to the mic?
Right, absolutely, you should go.
Personally, I don't think we need a subcommittee meeting. I, this should be dealt, dealt with directly to the council.
Bring it back to here, absolutely, absolutely.
What is your recommendation tonight? What would you want this council to do?
Sorry to put you on the spot there.
Take the spires down.
What's that?
Take the spires down.
Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Treu, to Mike. Real quick, sir, uh, Mr. Julian, wasn't that the original?
Yes, that was the original discussion and agreement, the day on site.
Yep.
Past inspector that was in charge at the time was willing to give him two weeks to come up with a production schedule we've never seen, um, as well as the engineer report, we ended up with a one-page report.
Yep.
Very vague. He does have a more comprehensive report now. If he can produce the rest of the paperwork by tomorrow, I would consider it, but as far as I can see right now, take them down because we're falling on deaf ears, the action is not happening.
Okay, thank, to follow up, and I don't know if Ms. Harnoy is here, maybe the town manager knows, um, if, how much money we had in the, uh-
There's a noise there.
There she is.
Yep.
Oh, sorry Karen, I, I didn't know, do you know how much money is in the account for, um, removal of property? I think it's under the Board of Health, the destruction funds? Yeah, it's under Blight.
Gentlemen. Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Please stay at the podium.
Yes.
No. Uh, Ms. Harnoy doesn't know, but that's okay, I just wanted to see how much money we had left in there. And an estimate cost, Mr. Julian, uh, bringing those down?
The original cost that we got for taking down the spires only was around 38,000. I can get a new updated cost before the week's over.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Julian.
Counselor Lozlo. If Mr. Julian needs to update that demo, let's give him the time to update the demo number. But if the gentleman gets that paperwork in, before that, would you have a problem honoring that contract, or do you wanna move forward on spirals?
If he can produce the paperwork and have a contractor on site to make the building safe in a reasonable amount of time, paperwork by tomorrow, contractor 14 days, I'll give him. That's it, I'm all done.
You know, just follow up, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Adams, follow up.
That's a good point, uh, Counselor Lozlo, as far as that's concerned. I'm looking at our next meeting being held on the 19th of December. All paperwork, required paperwork is due to, to the executive assistant on that Wednesday, which is the 14th, and town council packets go on the 15th. If it's not there by 12 o'clock on the, on that Wednesday, we'll put a motion in there to take them down immediately with the account number, period. So I make a motion at this point in time to, um, give, give Mr. Rivera up until the, my lord. The 14th at noon, by noon, 12 o'clock.
I second that.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Is that your entire motion?
Yes, that's it.
Give Mr. Rivera to the 14th at noon, to get the paperwork in.
Or they're coming in.
It's Scott.
I need the roll call.
Remind you already say.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Stevens.
Um, yeah, I just wanna clarify, 'cause I think from what, what I was hearing Mike saying, is that he want, he was willing to give them 14 days to actually knock the spires down. Is that what I heard you properly? If, if, or to get the paperwork in so that this person would actually start the work to, to make the repairs necessary, is that, am I, I gotta clarify exactly what is, you were, what it was you were saying, you were gonna give him 14 days to do.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I just wanted to clarify what it was you said you would give him 14 days to do, to get the work done, right? Not to get, just to get the paperwork in.
I want the paperwork within, by tomorrow.
Right.
Then a contractor on site to start the work within 14 days.
Okay, that's what I thought, not just the paperwork, not just what Counselor Adams suggested, it was getting the paperwork within 14 days. You want the work to actually start within 14 days.
Right.
Good, okay, that's what I would like. Clarify.
So do we need to amend that motion?
Is, are we kind of, we seem to be sort of on the same page based on what Mike said, just to clarify a little bit, just to, see, I think, I think we all want this, I think we all want the same thing, we're just trying to figure out exactly how to say it.
All right, Mr. Manager.
Something I wanted to clarify with, um, Mr. Julian, I just went over, he and I have been discussing this, um, I had spoke to Mr. Rivera at the last meeting, um, the lobby. In order for Mr. Julian to move forward the building permit, we have to ensure that all back taxes and water and sewer paid. I'm informed and believe that Mr. Rivera, based on the properties over there, has a, a significant arrears, and Mr. Julian said to me the only way that he can issue that if, that something cannot be come up, is there has to be a waiver on the part of the town manager. So I just want to know what the council's, um, pleasure is, if, if we're gonna get this done, or we, I'm not sure the amount is significant from what I've been told.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Treu. I consider this an emergency, so I would say that you're gonna have to do what you have to do to make sure those spires come down. Thank you.
Because that's, to, to Counselor Marketti's point, the, uh, the building inspector said if it's an emergency, it can be waived, but I know we have a policy, I just wanted to make sure. So I will take that into consideration when, when the paperwork comes in, the application.
Counselor Stevens.
Just to clarify, to go through, um, to you to the manager, so I'm, I'm assuming you mean that they, that he doesn't necessarily have to pay, pay it before the work gets done, but he still has to pay it at some point? We're not gonna sort of walk away with not paying it?
Yes, he does, he owes, he, he has money, that is all.
Okay.
But according to Mr. Julian, in order to issue a permit-
Right, okay.
If it's an emergency, the manager can sign off, and I'm just gonna make that aware of this is something we need to address-
Okay.
For public safety.
Okay.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Treu. I mean, I know I'm deaf, I have a hernia to hear, and my voice may be loud because I'm deaf, you know, I don't hear my voice sometimes, people think I'm yelling. Isn't that last meeting, we told him, go pay the police, whatever, whatever? So this is too weak. I mean, I don't get it, like, okay, paperwork to find the contractor, find an engineer, I understand, maybe he needs some time. I, I, I'm gonna bend over a little bit, but I don't think he need time to go to the town hall and say, what's my balance, write a check? I pay my bill, I don't see hard time, you got a website, if you have a interest, you come here, I don't think they give you hard time to pay bill. They love money. So I, I don't know what, now we're gonna waive some fees, and, and, like, I don't get it, like, I'm gonna vote no, I'm not gonna give no more time. I mean, I don't think he's gonna bring this paperwork tomorrow, we give him two weeks already, three weeks to bring the permit, when I say last meeting, get the paperwork, submit the permit, and then we can see as a good face, you will, you mean it well. And he came to the meeting with a print email, and not, not, he's a complete. We're not playing game in here, we asked you what we want last time, pay your bill, and pull a permit.
It's complete, it's complete, the con-
Pull a permit.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen.
I'm not gonna argue with you. Where's the permit application? The permit application is not in. It's not in.
Mr. Rivera, Counselor Dow has the floor.
That's fine.
The, the permit is not in, that mean the, the paper is not complete. Thank you.
Yes, from my understanding, from Mr. Julian, there has not been an application or anything submitted.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I completely understand where Counselor Dow is coming from. On the next meeting, if nothing is happening, there's a motion on the, we're gonna put a motion in the town council agenda to tear them down immediately with the account information, where that money's gonna come from. So it's gonna happen, either Mr. Rivera's gonna find a miracle, or it, the motion's gonna already be there on the 19th to vote on it. So I don't see an issue with it, just to make sure what account we would take it from, that, I think that's the biggest part. So you leave it open like Counselor Lozlo had stated, give, give that period of time, but on the 19th, we're voting on, if, if he's working, Mr. Julian's gonna come to say, hey, this is all working out. But if we, we'll know beforehand, we will know beforehand how to make that motion, and then motion will be to tear down those, those items, those steeples. So no matter what, something's gonna happen at that point in time.
Counselor Stevens.
I just wanted to clarify, based on the, the, the motion that we actually voted at the last meeting specifically states, that we move to have Mr. Rivera pay the $3,000, have an engineering study done, um, and then Counselor Dow moved to, moved to amend, and we unanimously approved to have him apply for the building permit, including all required documents showing that the building is safe, is safe. And that, the amended motion passed six to one with just you opposing.
Counselor Lozlo.
I wasn't at the last meeting, I apologize, I was working, um, late night, but the only reason why I'm going along is because the building inspector recommended he needs time to get the numbers together to take it down. So in the meantime, if he gets the numbers to take it down, updated, the finance director gets the, the right accounts to transfer the money to pay for the takedown, everything will be aligned. In the meantime, if he comes up with all the documents that the building inspector wants, and satisfies the building inspector and public safety laws that he enforces, then that's the reason why I said, let it go, and organize your thoughts, your finances, and everything we have to do on the next meeting, all the bullets will be in the gun. It's your call whether we pull the trigger. If you're not ready by that time, the money will be lined up, then we'll pull the trigger. But that's the reason why I thought, I'm going along with the building inspector on this one, you know, I know everybody got frustrated at the last meeting, I missed it, and I, and I share that frustration, but I still think analytically, you gotta think it through and make sure you do it properly on our end-
Right.
So all of a sudden, we don't have a liability problem on the town side. I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying-
Right.
I'm just disagreeing on how to approach it, finance it, and then pull the trigger. Thank you.
Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. Just wanted to let the record show, is a suggestion back from June 2017, number 6470 is demolition of blighted buildings, I think there's 150 grand in there, which should be more than enough to cover 38,000, so now we're one step closer to voting on this in two weeks. Thank you.
Counselor Rivas.
I do share your frustration, Counselor Dow, because it is a safety issue, um, and I'm wondering if it does need to be amended to the motion, um, to add the stipulation from the building inspector that the contractor be on site for that to, um-
Second.
We have an amendment to the motion by Counselor Rivas and seconded by Counselor Stevens, to amend the motion to insert that a contractor needs to be on site by-
By the day?
By-
By the 14th.
14th is that Wednesday.
The 14th. Contractor needs to be on site by the 14th. We have an amendment to the motion and a second discussion. Counselor Marketti, can I have his hand up first?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there some reason why the contractor couldn't be on site earlier than the 14th? I mean, I, I thought the last meeting, you said he would be starting by now.
He would have been on there way before all this, but he requested these documents, and I-
Okay.
I'm glad that I got it in a timely fashion, that you guys requested short period of time, you said two weeks, but typically it was four days. I called the, uh, the building inspector, requested, what was it that you actually needed to email me? Never got, never got back to me.
All right, I don't really wanna rehash it.
And, um, Mr. The, uh, uh, Michael here was the one that actually got back to me and, and requested, you know, what was needed, but nothing about permitting and so forth and getting all that together, but we'll work on it.
All right. You can get the contractor there before the 14th?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give him a call tomorrow and, and tell him what was, you know, what's going on, you know?
Counselor Lozlo then Counselor Dow.
Again, I'm gonna yield to the, to the building inspector, um, he knows, and I know, that getting people engaged to, to act compared to pulling the permits, uh, once he pulls the permits and gets all the paperwork in line, whether it takes one or two days, or, you know, that'll be up to the building inspector. If you wanna put a, do you have a problem with putting the stringent contractor on site by the 14th, or this to the building inspector?
He brought a contractor with him the last time, so I'm assuming he's still working with the contractor. Made it sound like it wouldn't be an issue, as soon as they had a permit, they would be able to go to work.
You want us to put that in the motion?
Yes, I want it in, in the motion that in 14 days, there'll be a contractor on site. Stabilize, nothing else, stabilizing the building. They had talked the day that we met, the day the original first collapsed, they had talked about putting a net up around the building, the spires to catch any other debris from falling, there's still no net. You don't need a permit to put up a net.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? I'm sorry, I'm, I apologize, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Treu.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Treu. I think a contractor know what, what he's doing. You don't need to call a building inspection and ask them what you want. You go to a town hall, you say, I need a permit. He's a contractor, he do job before, he know what's required. Did he got the per, a permit application? Did he go online and load it? No, none of these, I just phone call. How many phone call you got a day, maybe you can't reply, or certify mail you cannot open?
On average, I have 30 to 35 phone calls a day.
Then how many certify mail you don't open or you don't check?
We open every single certify mail that we get, and I'll mail that books out.
Please direct your comments to the chair.
Treu.
Please.
Thank you. I'm also.
Very good. We have an amendment to the motion to add in the words, and the contractor needs to be on site. Any further discussion on the amendment to the motion?
By December 14.
By December 14. Very good. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, please raise your hand. All those against? Motion passes seven to one. We now have an amended motion on the floor. Any further discussion on the amendment, on the, on the full motion on the floor, the amended motion on the floor? Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. The whole waiving the back taxes thing, I, I know it's up to the manager- I, I just wanna, I just wanna be on the, the same page, I'm, I'm lost on that part. Is he gonna still have to pay the taxes by next?
The, the back taxes won't go away, it's my understanding through Mr. Julian, we do not issue permits unless people are current in their taxes. However, if there's an emergency situation, we can waive that requirement on, by my authority, I can issue the permit, but that doesn't mean he doesn't owe the money still, it's a remit.
I, I mean, I just think with all the time, it, I don't know if he deserves a waiver, but, oh, fine, thank you for the clarification. I know he's not delaying, I don't think, I think he should be, I think he should have to pay it in the next two weeks, but, but that's just me, I just wanted my feelings known.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? I'd just like to say, I'd like to make, um, my comments noted on this issue, since it is very volatile. When we met in June, in the heat of the summer, Mr. Rivera was given a time limit to get things done. Nothing happened. There's questions about the, um, stability of the roof in terms of water damage, continued water damage, there's questions about maintaining the integrity of the roof near the towers, should the towers be demolished? The building inspectors, plural, recommended that the building be taken down, and when I voted against the motion at the last meeting, that was because I supported the town building inspectors in what they had requested. I trust the people that work for the town and the town's safety on a daily basis, and I took their recommendations to heart. I still do. I believe that personally, not speaking as the chair, personally, I believe we've given the gentleman plenty of time, six months, or close to it. I think the time is long past for action. I believe there definitely should be action this evening. Therefore, I will not support this motion tonight. Thank you. We have an amendment, we have an amended motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Counselor Montigny.
You wanna make a motion to vote to take the spires down tonight?
No, we have the motion on the floor as it is.
Okay.
Very good. Roll call vote.
Uh, Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Dow?
No.[1769.87]
No.
Counselor Lozlo?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Motion passes six to two. Mr. Rivera, you have until the 14th to get your act together. Item number 20, vote to approve petition for repairs to a private way, request for surface repairs of Lincoln Street up to $500 in accordance with Chapter 8, Section 8-102.
Still moved.
Second.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved at the DPW Subcommittee by unanimous vote.
Very good. The motion was by Counsel Steves, seconded by Counselor Montigny. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Mr. Lozlo abstaining?
Well, he's not here.
Not present.
He's not present. Just not part of the vote.
Did you wanna take a break, Mr. Chairman?
At this point in time, considering the way the evening has gone so far with lots of discussion, any motion? I'm taking a five-minute recess. I call this meeting back to order at this point in time. We'll move on to item number 21, vote to expand the no parking from here to corner parking zone in the area of 11 Charlton Street, 30 feet east from its current location.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Dow, a second by Counselor Adams, Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was voted unanimously to send it up to council.
Thank you. Any discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 22, vote to approve adding three-foot tubular surface mounts and line striping to improve sight lines on the following streets in existing no parking zone located in front of 45 Hamilton Street, which is the Crown Fried Chicken, in existing no parking zone located at the intersection of West Street and West Main Street adjacent to 825 Main Street, which is Domino's Pizza, and in existing no parking zone located at 11 Charlton Street to the intersection of Central Street and Worcester Street.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Dow, second by Counsel Steves, Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was voted unanimously at the DPW Subcommittee meeting to send it up to the council for approval. It'd be nice if the residents could see exactly what these are, but, I mean, if the, if the police chief wants to explain it, that'd be great, but it's just these, these cones that are bolted into the ground that, so people won't park there anymore.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, through you, Mr. Chair. I do have a photo of a tubular service mount that was used in a neighboring city. I don't know if... You can see that?
Not really.
Might be.
Gotta zoom in way more on that.
There you go.
That's a delay. Yeah, it's good.
They're just tubular, tubes that are bolted into the ground.
Yeah, I'll explain that. So if I can, through you, Mr. Chair, quickly, it's just, it's just to improve sight lines there, but they're three feet tall, they're screwed into the ground, the DPW will be able to remove them during snowstorms, and it's got to make it so people can't park in areas they're not supposed to. Just simple, it's used in all, in the bigger cities and towns.
Any discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 23, vote to approve adding a stop sign at Fisk Street and Cliff Street.
Still moved. Second.
Motion by Counsel Steves, second by Counsel Dow, Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved unanimously at the DPW Subcommittee to send it up to Town Council for approval.
Very good. Any discussion?
Apparently, there was a stop sign there at one time, and it's no longer there. Thank you.
Very good. How's that? Okay.
All right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 24, vote to approve a citizen's request pertaining to the addition of a blind person's, of a, of blind person signage in the area of 114 Litchfield Ave.
Still moved.
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counsel Dow. Any discussion?
And this was voted unanimously at the DPW Subcommittee. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Counsel Marketti. Chief?
This, I do want to speak to quickly, Mr. Chair, so we don't have to hold up the meeting. This particular type of signage, as well as, you know, the similar, the children at play is not covered by the manual uniform traffic devices, traffic control devices. So that's why people frown, or police departments, police chiefs, town administrators, things like that, on putting up slow children at play, because they're not really effective in slowing down traffic, but I have a letter from the Massachusetts Commission for the Blind, that there is a child living in that area, and I'd rather err on the side of caution. I apologize for the council, I already heard me say this at the Subcommittee, but I completely support 100% putting this sign in this neighborhood. But I just wanted you to know that it's not covered by the MUTCs.
Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I threw you to the chief. Do you have any, like, rough estimate of when this will be done, if we approve, yes?
If this is approved tonight, Mr. Montigny, I will work with Phil on getting this done, hopefully in the next few weeks.
Okay, great. No, I just, the citizen has reached out to me, I think I might have mentioned that to you in the past, but I just wanted to follow up with her personally, because she mentioned that...
It will be done as quick as possible.
Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 25, vote to approve citizen's request for adding a stop sign on Ellis Road at the intersection of Torrey Road.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counselor Steves, Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved unanimously at the DPW Subcommittee meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion, counselors?
Apparently, there's a rash of stolen stop signs around town.
Mr. Chair, we, we did discuss it at the DPW Subcommittee meeting, and I don't know when the stop sign was removed, I've been working there for a long time, I'm old now, and there's always been a stop sign there, there was a stop sign on Fisk and Cliff also, and for some reason, these signs over the years disappeared, and they need to be put back as quickly as possible.
Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 26, vote to approve citizen's request pertaining to adding a blind drive sign in the area of 183 Brentwood Drive.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Steves, second by Counsel Dow, Counsel Marketti.
Again, this was approved 5 to 0 at the DPW Subcommittee meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number 27, vote to accept Chapter 41, Section 110A of Massachusetts General Law, or take any other action thereto. The motion is submitted by the Town Clerk's Office.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counselor Adams. This motion was submitted by the Town Clerk's Office, as you can see in the backup material, it's got to do with office hours on Saturday. Madam Clerk, I believe you're going to address us.
The Secretary of State's Office last year changed the last day to register to vote from 20 days to 10 days. If any election falls on a Tuesday, that 10th day would be a Saturday, unless we accept Chapter 41, Section 110A. If that's the case, and we accept that chapter, then the last day to register to vote would be the day previous, which would be Friday till 5 o'clock. So rather than staying open on Friday till noon, and then having to open Town Hall 9 to 5, when there's nobody here, it just makes more sense to consider Saturday a holiday, because this will happen for every election, because all the state elections are also on a Tuesday. And that's why I brought this forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Lozlo.
Is there any expense to this?
No, none whatsoever.
Thank you.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So if the town hall is only open till noon on Friday, how...
Correct. So I would stay till 5.
It says here till 8, 8 to 8.
Excuse me?
I thought it said here from 8 to 8:00 PM.
No, it used to be till 8. They changed it, when they changed the 20 days to 10 days, they changed it just till 5.
All right.
Instead of the 8:00 PM.
Well, it's, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 28, vote to amend the Town of Southbridge Employees Personnel Rules and Regulations, Section 6, Separation of Employment, Retirement, Dental Insurance. The original language reads, "The dental insurance is not offered to retirees, the coverage will end on the date of your retirement." The amendment is to say, "The Town offers dental insurance to retirees with no premium contribution by the Town, it is fully retiree-funded."
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Dow, second by Counsel Steves, Counsel Steves.
Oh, yeah, we, we recommend, we talked about that at some length, and we recommended it unanimously.
Can you hear him?
Could you say that again, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. We talked about it at some length, and we recommended it unanimously.
Recommended unanimously.
Yep.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 29, vote to accept Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, SMRP grant from MassDP, for $8,800, and authorize the Town Manager to sign any related paperwork.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counselor Steves, Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was voted unanimously at the DPW Subcommittee to come up here for approval. This grant, I believe we're gonna try and use this to send out a mailer to the residents concerning the work we're doing on curbside garbage collection. I think that's what we're using for. Get a definite answer on that, I'll find out by this Thursday, we're gonna have another meeting. And I also wanted to know if there were any funds left over from the last grant that we received, but I don't think Anna's here now, so I'll have to ask her when I see her Thursday, if she, if she's at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
I was informed that both Mr. Waziac and Ms. Smith were out sick today, so that's why no one is here, but typically, we get this, these funds back to use for recycling equipment, education, and outreach, and it is my understanding that they're planning to use some of this for the outreach for the curbside issue.
All right, thank you.
But I, we can talk to them about finding out any leftover balance.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 30, vote to accept the Urban Agenda Grant Award for $75,000 to promote economic development in the urban renewal area, and authorize the Town Manager to sign any related paperwork.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counsel Steves, Counselor Adams. Counsel Dow? Okay.
The last one, before you say Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you.
You can't hear him when he talk, how do you hear him say second?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is voted on unanimously in favor of. We received this Urban Agenda Grant a couple of years ago, it was utilized for concerts on the new Central Street Plaza area, which was a good success, it was a start of something I think hopefully will be able to grow on, and also be utilized for a mural, which I think will be decided later on, and Ms. Dean can answer more of that, but it was unanimous of vote in favor of.
Any discussion? Counselor Montigny.
Thank you very much. Is this the mural you're speaking of, the Central Street mural above Fidel's Bill's Coffee Shop?
Correct.
I have heard that one of the options that seems to be in the forefront is that they're gonna paint over this and make a new mural, and I just think that with all this talk of trying to save tradition and trying to keep everything in Southbridge, you know, really don't want to see the mural changed. I know it's only, you know, everybody who's grown up here for the last 40 years has seen that mural. It's not like it was built in 1816, but, you know, it's something that Southbridge has left an imprint here. It's, it's becoming just a tradition to have it here, and there's a lot of other walls in town, we don't need to erase old ones and make new ones. So as far as this item goes, if there is any chance that this mural is gonna get wiped out and taken down, I'm voting no on it, and I don't think that we should be altering that mural, so.
Okay. Counselor Adams.
And Ms. Dean can caveat off it, I know there was a lot of questions about that, that evening, and I've heard other, other issues down, down the road, or prior to, about that same, you know, getting rid of that mural. And one of the questions I did ask was, was it new history, or was it old history? How do, how do we work that? One point that I think Ms. Dean brought up was the fact of the pointing of the building that has to be redone. It's gonna change the whole dynamics of that mural itself, but I, please, I'd let her speak more on that.
Ms. Dean.
Sure, if I may through you, Chair. The, if it was a private mural, the McCarthys could do with it what they choose. However, because we're using public funds, we're gonna assemble a committee of, the redevelopment authority will recruit people that he thinks are good representatives of culture and art to be able to speak to what would be best for the, the community as a whole, and then they will either, they will go out for an artist through a juried process to find a muralist to do the work, and, or, should they choose to preserve the entire mural as is, they would have to point the building and then repaint the same painting. And so rather than doing that, if it was to be a new mural, they would try to preserve the old mural in a digitized form, higher quality than what you see right now on the wall, through the library, and it will be sort of, I think it's set like a, you know, an inset on the building, or, and think of it like a small inlay, or it would be preserved on the inside of the building, but in some way or fashion, it will be preserved, and the, the jury process will hopefully be something that, you know, again, through this community process, welcomed by everybody.
Okay, Counsel Marketti, then Steves, then Dow, then Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not gonna rehash the whole conversation that we had at the Subcommittee meeting. I did have some concerns, because I look at the Urban Agenda Grant Program, and I don't see how this is going to support community economic development. They're having bans downtown. I don't, I don't really see that as a, a path towards economic development downtown. I did go onto the State's Urban Agenda Grant Program, because I, I was very curious about it after the meeting, just to look at what they have posted, on how they would suggest that you use the funding, and what, some of the things that I found was that they want you to respond to housing crisis, build vibrant communities, support business competitiveness, and train skilled workforce. It listed some of the info and guidelines about who's eligible. They, they listed the eligible projects such as workforce development, small business and entrepreneurs. They, they listed some examples of a commercial kitchen, training at-risk residents, culinary careers, business training to support for women, minorities, veterans-owned businesses. They also had a link, and I would recommend the counselors take a look at the website, the State's website. It had a link to some of the grant awards, and what I saw, a lot of different towns that were listed, and the examples that they listed were, a lot of them used it for a master plan, some of them used it for refrigerated trucks for family meal deliveries, skill training and career development, curbside compost pilot program, business support for Latinx owners, technical assistance, minority business support, workforce development. The closest that I could find to what is being done here in Southbridge is Fall River. They have something called Viva Fall River, and they do have musical events, but they usually have it at their arts center. I know that we have an arts center here, I think the arts center here could probably use some funds to hold events like that. They also have a holiday event and parade, a festival of lights. They promote artists, food tasting exhibits, event spaces, so a lot of the things that I saw on the State's website that they use at this grant for, I didn't see really much in the way of having bands downtown in a parking lot. So I would recommend that we use it for something like that, rather than what it's being used for. And that's all I really have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Steves.
Thank you. Actually, I was going to say something completely different, but to address what Councilor Marquetti was saying, I believe that the whole idea of promoting culture and music and arts and those kinds of things does have an economic benefit to any community that really goes ahead and tries to promote them. And with the bands that we have seen going down there, granted, it was, they were relatively small audiences unfortunately, but they'll grow as they do in time with, it's an issue of promotion. But several of them have been local. Some of the artists have been local, like Gracie Davis there. And some of the others were related to the communities that we have in this community. And I guess the issue is a matter of trying to figure out the best way to promote them to the community who they might be most akin to in our community and get as many people down there as possible. This is, I mean, this is our downtown. And personally, I think the idea of trying to promote open-air events and culture and the music would make us more akin to a place like Northampton than it might be to some of the places that you cited. And there's nothing wrong with the places that you cited, but I think that the arts are something that our town has already kind of under the radar, and encouraging them to become much more noticeable in Southbridge is totally an economic development thing.
Very good. Councilor Dow, then Councilor Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. It's a great idea. It's a, I believe the community deserved that. With all these happening and award COVID and lock and the can't get out and get together, I mean, this community deserves to meet each other. Some people, they don't know each other still till now, to get together, to have fun and feel like a part of everything in this town. My concern only, it depends or whatever is going to change. It'll be yellow and blue. That's it. Thank you.
Councilor Reeves.
To Councilor, through you, Chair, to Councilor Marquetti's question about whether it will benefit businesses. I remember in 2010, when I worked at UINC, and we had the street fairs where Main Street was shut down completely. And I happened to be at Stiles on Saturday, shopping Small Business Saturday, you know, supporting my local businesses. And the owner of Stiles happened to be talking to me about those street festivals and how much business he used to get and how it attracted people in the downtown area to come into his business. And he's like, everything can't be at the common. You know, we need, we need to have those types of activities in our area of town on Main Street again. And this grant speaks exactly to that need, bringing out the people that live in the downtown area in the Central Street parking lot. And then also, it speaks to our police chief having concerns about closing down the street. So it eliminates the safety issue that our police department had with closing down the street, but it speaks and it caters to our businesses in the downtown area, and it will attract other businesses. The number one thing, people want to see traffic. People want to see, businesses want to see people walking downtown. And festivals and mural projects and a lively art scene, that does attract business. That is, you know, it's proven in other communities. And we do have a lot of performers, a lot of artists. We do need to do a little better job of attracting, like Councilor Marquetti said earlier, local acts to be promoted. But I think this grant speaks exactly to what is needed in that area. Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Montigny.
Thank you very much. I completely agree with the previous speaker, and I think we definitely need all those things. And I'm all for Central Street getting a music and art scene. But one thing that this grant allows is the potential for public money to erase that mural. And if that wasn't part of this, I'd be voting yes, and it's a soft spot for me, and I'm voting no. As long as the potential's there for that mural to get erased with public money, I'm not voting yes. Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Lozlo.
I think the previous speaker has to realize when they repoint the building, there is no mural. Repointing a construction project, if he's repointing his building, what's going to happen is he's going to cut out all the joints on the brick and rejoint them. That's going to be the whole wall. If he repoints that wall, there's not going to be much mural left. So for myself, construction-wise, I'm saying, it's bye-bye mural, whether you give him the money or not, because he has to repoint the building from what I understand. So talking about economic development, the minute you make it a destination, I think the previous speaker, Reeves, Councilor Reeves brought up the old downtown where they used to shut the whole Main Street down. It was a great business day. She, that brought economics. Everybody was in the stores. The food they sold that day was amazing. Even some of the businesses from outside of the core area opened up on Main Street, the cot. So there's different ways to build economic development, enhancing jobs, bringing in business. You have to make it a destination. You have to have traffic. I think everybody points to Putnam as, what happened to that dead town with the dull, empty storefronts? Antique shops ended up being their road to success. The fire on the water and all that stuff that they do. I mean, if anybody remembers Southbridge with the dark dingy alleys, and now when you walk through, there are no dark dingy alleys anymore. It's opened up. You see wrought iron fences. You see Central Pizza putting outside dining in the back towards the parking lots. I mean, there's a lot of work going on, and I'm going to vote yes tonight because I want to continue to put money in that downtown area to see if we can spur activity, make it a destination where people can come. I know the first time you have a band in the parking lot, everybody's going to shoot a salute, but you can't just give up on it. You've got to keep working at it, and I think that here's another step to work at it, and it's a grant, and I think it's a good grant. I say we vote for it.
Thank you. Very good. All those in favor? I'm sorry. Peg, you had something to say?
Could I please just quickly, I want to address the comments about the other grants that were awarded. If I could just put this in context, you had a planning grant. It was your local rapid recovery planning grant, which you got through the state the prior year for, you know, I see lots of examples in here, like Councilor Marquetti referenced for planning grants, master plans, et cetera. That would be appropriate if we needed a planning grant. However, we were trying to go for action items from an existing planning grant that we'd just gotten the prior year, which said we should be doing events in the downtown to promote people to come in. And so I'm trying to follow through on, you know, what we've already spent public money on. And then with regards to the economic development through workforce training and the other options, that would have been fantastic. I am all for us trying to get our workforce trained. However, those aren't things you can just create within a heartbeat. Chances are, they dropped in money into an existing potential workforce training program or program design, which we didn't have at the time, and we had to implement this within six months. We were being awarded today. This has to be spent by June. And so, you know, I have to be realistic about what level of capacity we have over and over again. You know, we talk about how, having to keep our capacity down to save on staffing, et cetera, but then we, you know, talk about bolstering our workforce development through programs that we're going to implement. That's highly unlikely. So, you know, we have to just weigh the pros and cons and decide what we see as best fit with what's existing already. It's not just sort of pulling things out of the sky like, oh, Southbridge is going to invent this great idea for concerts on the common.
Councilor Montigny.
Thank you. Okay, well, so if you can promise me that after it's repointed, that the copy is to scale size, repaint the mural exactly as it was, and there's a lot of empty space. We could add some flavor to it. We could put a picture of Councilor Adams up there or something. You know, if you could promise me that we could do that and have the exact mural with maybe a couple of the things added to it, repaint it, then I would vote yes. But I know you can't promise me that, so I'll still vote no. And I really appreciate all of your hard work on this. It has nothing to do with the grant, and I totally support what everybody wants to do with the money besides making a new mural. Repaint the old mural then. But, thank you.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Those against? Two. Motion passes 6 to 2 with Councilors Montigny and Marquetti against. Item number 31, vote to approve the release of the Affordable Housing Restriction on 111 Central Street and authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Motion by Councilor Lozlo, second by Councilor Steves. Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was voted unanimously to send up here in favor of, by the Subcommittee.
Any discussion? Councilor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. From what I was reading in your paperwork here, he's only required to have four units for, one for handicap, three for affordable housing. How many apartments does he have in the building that he can't have that? That doesn't seem like very many.
If I may through you, Chair. For anyone who's interested in a more elaborate conversation about this, we talked about this at the Subcommittee at length. The conversation is not about what he is building versus what this Affordable Housing Restriction requires. It's that they're two very separate issues. The Affordable Housing Restriction was created for the prior owner, Hunter Foot, who entered into an agreement with the town to develop the property. He didn't. The town never entered, never obligated the $800,000 minus the initial amount they spent to acquire the property and for administration. We're therefore trying to remove the Affordable Housing Restriction for the new owners, new developers, so that it's very clear that these are not related to each other at all, and they're not mired in any way by some pre-existing relationship the town had with the prior owner.
Thank you. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I did read exactly what you just said. I read it in your paperwork. My question just was why he can't provide one handicap access apartment and three affordable. I mean, I took a look at his project. It looks pretty nice. I like what he's doing there. I think he has a lot more apartments than that. So I just didn't understand why he couldn't provide that. Doesn't seem like very much to provide to the community.
If I may through you, Chair, with all due respect, I feel like this is a moot point. I don't really know how to address it any more clearly.
I'm all set. Thank you.
You're all set? Thank you. Councilor Adams.
This is not to anybody. This is, you know, and I know Ms. Dean, and I understand the questions of Councilor Marquetti, but again, this is to a gentleman named Hunter Foot, who failed miserably in this town. And, you know, this is going to somebody that's actually, the current owner is going to pay, if this is keep going, is going to pay for some, you know, he's redeveloping that entire area, and he's spending the little money that he does have to make sure this happens. And this has to do with Hunter Foot and not Mr. McCarthy and all what they've done over there. And we're just trying to take it off to make sure that Mr. McCarthy and his family or his business succeeds with this where the other one failed miserably. Thank you.
Councilor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This is kind of example when you, I'm not, when you supporting a person buy a property in the town of Southbridge, and he doesn't live here, and he make the building fall, he make the building dangerous.
Counselor.
I'm not specific pointing anybody. And this person here grew up, most of his kids in his in-town, I believe, if I'm not wrong. He improve a lot of building and make a lot of businesses, and he improve himself already all this year and living in here. So this is the type of guy you want to support. This is the type of guy you want to stand by. This is the guy you want to give him a chance because he's doing it. He's improving. Not somebody else that just want to travel their money and leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Lozlo.
I couldn't agree more. The best description is what Councilor Dow has just said. If we're going to work with people hand in hand on their properties, let's work with the person that's in charge, the person that's investing, the person that's moving forward, and leave the person that put this regulation or this thing down on this project, release it and work with the McCarthy to get that building open. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one with Councilor Marquetti against. The motion passes. Item number 32, vote to approve extending the Department of Housing and Community Development, D H C D, Community Development Block Grant, C D B G, Mini Entitlement, M E, of fiscal year 19, contract to February 28, 2023, and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Motion by Councilor Lozlo, second by Councilor Dow. Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was voted favorably recommended to come up here to the town council unanimously. Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 33, vote to accept the quote from B S C Group for $4,200 to help Southbridge apply for the New Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raise Grant Using Economic Development Specialized Services Funds and authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Motion by Councilor Dow, second by Councilor Steves. Councilor Adams.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Unanimous favor of all those on the P and D to come up here.
Any discussion? Councilor Montigny.
Thank you. Just to clarify, this is also related to Central Street, right? In some fashion? It's Hamilton?
Hamilton.
And I just wanted to point out that B S C designed the Joe Capello, I think, and they've already had three change orders, so hopefully they can help us with the grant. But anyway, thanks.
Councilor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I pointed out at the last, at the Subcommittee level, we did vote on last March at D P W Subcommittee to hire B S C Group to, for $5,400 to help us apply for the same grant. And apparently, they failed to get us the grant. So that's, I don't know why, for some reason, we keep putting our faith in B S C Group, but it seems to me that most of the things that B S C Group is involved with in this town seems to have problems, and that's my, that's my issue with this one. I will have some issues with the next one as well. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one. Councilor Marquetti against. The motion passes. Item number 34, vote to approve a transfer of $4,200 from project number 64600, fiscal year 18, D P W Building Repairs, to account number 001180-530000 to fund the B S C Group Service Agreement to Assist with the Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Raise Grant Application. Motion by Councilor Dow, second by Councilor Lozlo. Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unanimous of all present at the P and D in favor of. Discussion was had by Councilor Marquetti about the $4,200 because it's coming from a D P W account. When I received this and saw this, not that I'm not in disagreement with them, but at the same time, it was just, to me, that $4,200 was a simple, one department to another department transfer. This is recommended by, which was recommended by the town accountant. That was really the major discussion of that. Thank you.
Right. Councilor Montigny.
I'd like to make an amendment to instead take the money from, as there is an entrance to Central Street parking lot on Hamilton Street. It looks like an unused account. Upgrades to Central Street parking lot from June 17, number 64660, which in October had $5,428.43 left in it. I think it makes a lot more sense than what the previous speaker's concerns were with the D P W Building Repairs. I'd rather take it from that project instead.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to change where the money is being taken from. Ms. Honoy.
If I could speak on Karen's behalf, we get those special account lists every year also, and we
also, and we indicate what we're using, if we're using those funds. She's fully aware that I have some of those funds encumbered. And so unfortunately, if, if you were to go and commit it to something else, you would throw off my books. So I would ask you to please not touch that account.
May I ask, what is the remaining fifty-four hundred encumbered for?
Yes. And it, it may not be at fifty-four hundred at this point, but we have paid for the, we have slated to pay for the kiosk through Bay Path. They were supposed to build the kiosk, but then because of COVID, it was delayed. And so we still have some funds reserved for that. We also have funds for landscaping that we were using it for. And, and it's, it's definitely down to like, more like, less than two thousand or two thousand at this point. So again, I would ask that you please not interfere in the, that account.
Did, did Ms. Harnoy have anything to add? If not, I mean, just curious. No? Okay. I'll withdraw my motion if that money is already being used. Obviously, it doesn't make sense anymore. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Marquetti.
So I did have a problem with this at the subcommittee level, mainly because DPW Building Repair Fund here, we, a little while, July fifth, we had to transfer funds from many, many different accounts within DPW to pay for an HVAC repair. And we had never been made aware of this fund. If we had been aware of this fund, I think we would have voted to use this money instead of where the money we, we took it from. Now, when DPW voted on this last March to hire BSC Group for the same grant, we voted to use ARPA funds. So I don't see anything wrong with using ARPA funds. I would just assume any DPW Building Repair Funds be left alone because there are a lot of issues with the DPW building that we, we need the funds for future building repairs. I know that when we had our October Capital Planning Committee meeting, I was given this paperwork, and it said that that fund, that capital, or DPW Building Fund, had twenty-one thousand dollars in it, but now tonight it's only got nine thousand dollars in the fund. So I am sort of curious as to what happened to the other twelve thousand dollars between October and today. I would just assume, though, that we transfer ARPA funds for this and not DPW funds. DPW Building does have work that needs to be done. I know that they're gonna have some more work coming up with those boilers. Possibly, the office is gonna need some work on the air conditioning. So that's where I stand on it. I would just assume we wouldn't use, touch DPW funds for this project. Thank you.
Ms. Harnoy.
If I could through the chair, I'm just, I'm just gonna try to say this in a nice way.
I can't hear you.
Um, I, um.
Please, please approach the mic. Pull the mic close.
Provided the capital projects balances because they've been asked for, and we've gone through them before to try to do some cleanup. But the point of it wasn't to put it out to town council to kind of, kind of like, second guess where we're getting money from, or to make suggestions about where to, where to get money from. The other twelve thousand was already transferred out at a, at a prior date. That's, that's where that went. And, you know, I know Counsel Marquetti came in and asked for an update on that, and that's what I'm going to do. But there is activity in these accounts. So just because we see a certain balance at a period of time, doesn't mean that that's the same balance that's there as of today. So I would, I would just suggest that I did talk to Matt DeJordan before he left, and he said that we could use the balance in the accounts. I would just suggest that we go with what's here right now. The, the balances will be updated, and then we will come forward and make some suggestions. I, I think we're getting too bogged down and weird to take things from. We're changing things around all the time, and we're just kind of getting confusing it. So I'd just like to stick with what we have here for now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Marquetti. Counsel Marquetti.
Uh, thank you very much. I think it's the council's job to second guess these things. I don't think it's Matt DeJordan, who no longer works here. I don't feel it's his job to tell us where the money should come from. I think that's our job to say where the money has come from. That is, I think that is the power in the charter. It's the town councils is in charge of, of procurements and spending money, not, not Matt DeJordan. I simply want to keep the money in DPW because we're gonna need that money for future projects at the DPW. It's not, it's not in good shape over there. Got a lot of problems. I don't see anything wrong with using ARPA funds. We used it last March on this very same, this same money for BSC Group, so I don't see anything wrong with using the ARPA funds. Thank you.
If I, if I could just clarify, I'm the one that made the suggestion of where to take it from. And, I mean, if you'd like to take it from ARPA funds, that's fine, but I think it's gonna then be delayed and have to go to the ARPA committee, who's gonna make the suggestion unless the town council wants to decide now.
No, I don't think so because Counsel Steves, at the last meeting, said we get hung up on what committee decides what. So as far as I'm concerned, that goes for all committees. And that means this committee tonight can decide to use it from ARPA funds.
I was referring to subcommittees.
I just, I guess I.
Ladies and gentlemen, once again, please direct your comments to the chair. Please wait to be recognized by the chair to speak. Ms. Harnoy.
I think I may have lost my, my train of thought when I was saying that. But when it comes to the, but, but then on the flip side of it, what you have to remember is that you're also saying that these accounts stay around too long. So if you're saying work needs to be done at DPW, then we need to get that work done. And we just kind of get caught in the same, in the same circle is just what I'm saying. So I'm all set. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lazzo.
It is going to subcommittee?
It did.
It is dead? What was the recommendation?
All in favor of.
Okay. That's one. Number two, I agree with Counsel Marquetti. The buck stops here. No question about it. But we have a finance director, which I like hearing the recommendations on how to move that money around. I will have the final say on moving it, but I think what we have to do is, we need to work as one and make sure the gears match and mesh so the machine moves. I just think that when it comes to those accounts, maybe, maybe a lot of guys can get into that budget. No matter how much you know about your budget, you still, there's a little bit you don't know. What's encumbered, what's unencumbered, what's it? So for myself, I, I do respect the recommendation to finance director. I mean, anytime we do a reorganization, anytime we do it, that's why we have professionals down below. But don't misunderstand what I'm saying. The buck does stop here, but I, I do like getting a recommendation from a department head. Not that I agree with it all the time. I will disagree it sometimes. But I mean, there's a, there's a mechanism to, to make things work. Thank you.
No, I'm good. I'll wait till.
Okay. Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I have a small question. How long you be in, at your position?
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years. How many counsel come and go? I didn't, I can't speak. The floor is mine. Don't, no, that's it. Now, I'll look at it. I agree with Counsel Marquetti. At the end, it kinda come here. I think she deserves some reward for, from this town. This is my opinion. This lady is working hard, and I'm sure if she wasn't doing her job correct, she wouldn't be nineteen years here, especially with the type, the environmental around here and, and the way we handle things sometime. I'm being honest. Thank you for your work, for your hard work. We really appreciate it. And don't get mad. You're the number one for us. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That list of funds, we found this, what, three, four years ago? We went through, Ms. Harnoy has probably been doing it for all nineteen years, scrubbing that list, and it constantly changes and changes. And this is one area that where, before the town council meeting, and I agree with Counsel Lazzo, Marquetti in a sense to, to, to that we ultimately make that decision. But that list is not accurate at all. That's why I keep asking the question, where are you getting this money from in this list? It's not accurate. So please, I would say, get with Ms. Harnoy or the town manager and say, can we get an updated list, which she normally does once a year. I've said it a million times, once a year, right before the budget season, she moves it around in the free cash, and we get all this stuff, and we kind of clean it up and, you know, with the help of the town staff. That fund, though, that, that list is so inaccurate at this point in time. I'm very careful about what we do and now bringing it up here. But that's my recommendation to the council. So that's all. But from that point on, I'm, I'm in agreement with this, utilizing these funds right now and then, then get to move them all.
Very good. Counsel Rivas hasn't spoken yet. Counsel Rivas.
I do agree that yes, the buck does stop here. We, we are the town councilors that are elected. But having run a department in the, in the school system, I do know how budgets work and how important the finance department is to let you know. Billing doesn't just, you know, you, you have a service and the bill comes in and it's paid in like, it doesn't, that's not the way things work. Things take a long time to get processed, and you have to consistently be checking in with your finance director to tell you what's been billed, what has been paid, what, how much money is still in that account. That's why we have professionals. That's why it is difficult to find such highly qualified individuals like Ms. Harnoy's. And we do have to trust her, you know, we do have to ask those questions because we do have to make decisions about money. But we can't take everything at face value. We have to ask those questions and consider, you know, someone that's doing the work day to day, that she's gonna be able to update us on what is there and what isn't there. Thank you.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nobody's gonna flip my words around and say that. I didn't say that Karen Harnoy was doing a bad job. That's like, never happened before. If you want to talk about running departments, I ran cable access here as a department alongside Karen Harnoy's for many years, and she was my favorite department head. Actually, my grandfather was the building inspector. So you're not gonna make it implied that I said she's doing anything wrong, because she's not. If the DPW money can be moved, fine. I'd like to see a different name on the account. It's got nothing to do with Ms. Harnoy's or her performance. She's one of the most outstanding individuals we have. I'm not gonna go through all these accounts tonight. I just want to say, there's another accountant here with the word Hamilton Street in it. I would have rather seen it come from somewhere else. So don't twist my words. I know what I'm doing. Thank you.
Okay. Let's bring this back to the agenda item. Vote to approve a transfer of forty-two hundred dollars from project number six-four-six-zero-zero, fiscal year eighteen, DPW Building Repairs, to account number zero-zero-one-one-eight-zero dash five-three-zero-zero-zero-zero to fund the BSC Group Service Project Service Agreement to assist with the rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity grant application. Is there any discussion remaining on the agenda item? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The point I was trying to make was that had I known this account was there, I would have used the account for some of the repairs that we did have. That was my only point. But no one made me aware of this account. And as Counsel Montigny said, there's lots of other accounts here that could be used. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one, I believe. Counsel Marquetti against. Item number thirty-five, vote to accept the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development's Mass Works Grant Award for eight hundred eighty-five thousand dollars towards East Main Street improvements and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
Move.
Second.
Uh, motion by Counsel Lazzo, second by Counselor Adams. Counselor Adams.
Unanimous of all present.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number thirty-six, vote to accept the Brownfield Grant from Mass Development to provide a Phase Two slide assessment in the Globe Village and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazzo, second by Counsel Steves. Counselor Adams.
Again, all present in favor of, recommended.
Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Item number thirty-seven, vote to approve a transfer of twenty-five thousand dollars from zero-zero-one-one-four-five-dash-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero salaries to number zero-zero-one-one-four-five dash five-three-zero-zero-zero-zero Specialized Services to cover the cost for interim treasurer collector services for the months of November and December payable to Strategic Municipal Services LLC.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Lazzo, second by Counsel Steves. Counsel Steves.
We recommended it unanimously.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number thirty-eight, vote to approve a transfer of fifteen thousand dollars from project number six-six-two-six-zero Cable Special Revenue Fund to account number zero-zero-one-one-five-nine dash five-one-zero-zero-zero-zero Cable Personnel Services to fund cable protected salaries through June thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Steves, second by Counsel Lazzo. Counsel Steves.
I was also recommended unanimously with one abstention.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number thirty-nine, vote to approve transfer of two thousand dollars from project number eight-one-zero-zero Assessors Revaluation Services to account number zero-zero-one-one-four-one five-three-zero-zero-zero-zero Specialized Services to cover the cost of mapping changes and updates to zoning and the overlay districts.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazzo, second by Counsel Steves. Counsel Steves.
Um, yeah, we recommended that unanimously. Just give a quick explanation because Rachel's not here anymore. I just want to let you know that we're doing this primarily because her department needed to update the various changes that we've made, zoning bylaws and the zoning map specifically over the last month or so, the last couple, last year or two. And she noted that she can hold off if we need to do it. The issue is just needing to make, she's been able to maintain smaller changes like individual lots here and there, but these need to get changed fairly soon so that the building department and various other people coming in to do projects have an accurate map to work off of because they've been having some issues because there's a lot of data at this point. So this, and as I say, we, we recommended it unanimously.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty, report from Counsel Ryan on subcommittee rules and regulations. Discuss and take any action thereof. I'm asking for a motion to postpone, please.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Lazzo, second by Counsel Dow to postpone. Any discussion? Counsel Marquetti.
Is there a date for this postponement?
I'm sorry, to the nineteenth.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Adams.
I asked, we both that, uh, second meeting in January.
Second meeting in January?
Yes, please.
Okay. There's an amendment to the motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay. The motion has been amended to move it to the second meeting in January. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. The motion as it stands now is to postpone until the second meeting in January. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Motion is postponed to the second meeting in January. Counsel's forum. Counsel Dow.
Nothing.
Thank you very much. Counsel Steves.
Um, I just have one quick thing. I just want to mention that on Tuesday, the thirteenth, I'm part of the Dudley Grange, and we'll be doing a presentation specifically about our New Hope chapter here in town and New Hope Presentations, what they do, what the kinds of issues they deal with as far as domestic violence goes. And we're gonna be donating some stuff to New Hope. So it's, that's gonna be at seven on Tuesday, the thirteenth, at the Dudley Grange.
Thank you very much. Counsel Rivas.
Um, I just want to reiterate from the Holiday Visions and how great it was to see so many residents out on the Common. And thank you to Denise Clemens and their whole committee for working on the Holiday Visions extravaganza, because it's like a huge event. I was also fortunate enough to go to the holiday sale at Ruth Wells Center for the arts. Lots of local artisans. We talked about.
local artisans. We talked about art and artisans, and, you know, we really want to promote all of those local events that happen. And when we're out and about shopping for the holiday season, making sure that we're, you know, we're promoting and shopping locally as much as we can. And like I said, I stopped into Stiles, you know, and all of those different businesses we have in town, you know, getting people gift certificates to our restaurants. Central Pizza, I went to their grand opening. It was amazing to see KK and just kind of, you know, reminiscing about like, high school. And we used to go there in high school and seeing students from the school, but also having space for adults to kind of, you know, gather and be together. And the great food that they had, it was really great to see that area downtown really liven up. So, you know, I commend our Economic Development Commission, our redevelopment authority doing all of the work. We are seeing the movement and we are seeing results from that work. And we just need to keep going. So please, you know, promote our local businesses. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lozlo.
Yeah, I'd just like to, I'm amazed at DPW. We don't have a DPW full-time director. We lost a town engineer. And a guy named Phil Harding gets more done than both of the other people. We're beating the drum on the AO sidewalks. He says, "We're going to take care of it. We're working on it." This week, the sidewalks are already being removed. Whoever, town manager, Phil, it seems like we get a straight answer from Phil, and then we get straight results from Phil. I don't know if the DPW director that we get could use his blueprint on how to deal with the issues. It's not rocket science, maintenance of a community, sidewalks, tree cutting, this. It's amazing what's happening on the DPW side. I just got to say, I know it's a department. I know the town manager is overseeing it. But this Phil guy is an amazing person. I just want to give him a shout out tonight. Keep up the good work. I know that he's doing a lot of stuff that he's probably out of grade. And when this is all done and we get a DPW director, I would like to bonus him without, with a pay out of grade because of what he's doing. He just, seven days a week, he goes. Thank you very much.
Very good. Counsel Montigny.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank everybody that's still here and the recording secretary, everybody up here for coming to the meetings all the time and at twelve o'clock at night. This might be our third meeting past eleven o'clock already. So I enjoy coming here. And I wanted to ask the town manager, I know we've discussed the rez, the ice skating before, and it's starting to get cold. And I know we talked about fixing some of the structure and the stairs. And, you know, Christmas is coming. If you need any money, we have one more meeting, you know. I would just really like to see the rez open this year. And I, because I know that's what we all talked about. And if you have a comment, or if not, it's fine. I just want to, that's all I have to-
That's all you have?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Manager.
About the only comment I can make is I will follow, excuse me, with Mr. Julian, as well as Mr. Harding. We went out a couple weeks ago to inspect, apparently, you know, some people thought it was in worse shape than it really was. DPW, as well as Mr. Julian, felt that some of it could be salvaged. There was some minor water damage on one side. So I will find out the status, if we need to make any repairs, and get back to you in advance at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr., I'm sorry, Counsel Montigny. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to bring up the paving that has been going on this past week. And I know the town manager already talked about it. I did want to mention a few things, though, because I think really, the problem really comes down to just the lack of oversight. Our DPW has been, subcommittee has been working on strengthening our street opening policies and trying to get new language for a construction inspector. We've just been waiting on the hiring of a new DPW director. We had two very qualified applicants for the oversight position, and I see no reason to hold off on hiring someone. I think that we could, we could hire someone. And if it doesn't work out, give them a probationary period. If it doesn't work out, then you try someone else. But to hold off while we're having all these problems with the street construction, it just seems to me like it would only make matters worse. I think sometimes taking action is better than taking no action at all. I know that the East Main Street sidewalk, I did mention that, someone mentioned that at subcommittee level. I did call Chip Norton Thursday, or I emailed him, and he said he would look into it. I saw that it wasn't fixed this weekend. Is it being fixed today? Sounded to me like maybe somebody, it's being fixed today.
Police agents were out also, so whoever they said it's subcommittee handled it.
All right. I know that, I've heard about more problems on Main Street. So I would just ask the town manager, if you can complete this hiring process to get a new DPW director, I would appreciate it, so that the sooner we can get this back on our agenda. So, and I appreciate it. Thank you. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I have a ARPA meeting on the thirteenth, four p.m. here in the parent room. So that's our next meeting. Then I'll have that up for the town council on the nineteenth. Next meeting will be held on Monday, December nineteenth, seven p.m. here in the DIAHS.
Very good. Item number forty-three. Vote to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, I do so declare. This is a litigation update.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Steve, second by Counsel Lozlo. Roll call.
Sorry. Counsel, Counsel Daniel?
Just a second. Just a second. Who else?
Making a friendly amendment from the manager's side. And I would just also add briefly for executive session pursuant to MGL, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, subsection two, to discuss negotiations or non-personnel, non-union personnel relative to the employment issue from before.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Counsel Montigny seconded the motion. Okay. Is that going to need a double roll call? Just one roll call, right?
Sounds good. I think we caution, I think we err on the side of caution.
Err on the side of caution. Okay. We'll vote on the amendment first. Roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yeah.
Counsel Lozlo?
Yes.
Marketti?
Yes.
Montigny?
Yes.
Counsel Rivas?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves?
Yeah.
And Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Okay. The motion now, as amended, is on the floor. Counsel will adjourn from executive session, will not return to open session, by the way. Okay, roll call vote.
Let's see, where do I start? Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Lozlo? Counsel Lozlo? Oh, sorry. Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Montigny?
Yes.
Counsel Rivas?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yeah.
Counsel Adams? Counsel Adams?
Yes.
And Counsel Dow? Daniel, sorry.
Yes. Very good. Counsel will adjourn from executive, from executive session and will not return to open session. We're moving to executive session.